All right, I will call to order the common council meeting on June 23rd at 7:34. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Aratafrata. Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Krausey. Alder Maldonado. Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman. Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Next up is public appearances, and the first thing I have on here is a new appointment for SIDA. This is the last open appointment right now, open seat, and I am proposing Norma Vegas Gallegos. I just forgot to print off her form. She didn't send me anything, but I know that when I remember, she lives in District 3. Oh, she's, oh, come on up, let's tell us who you are. Great, good.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here, and I just wanted to come and thank you for this opportunity. I've been a Fishbury resident for the past 15 years, so it's an honor to be able to serve on a council. Sitting in the room next door, it just reminded me of a grant opportunity that I received through my nonprofit work, the Neighborhood Grant, that gave us the opportunity to bring training and education to Fishbury. So I'm really looking forward to bring more opportunities, economic opportunities and resources for all of the Fishbury residents. So I'm really proud and honored to be part of the council, and I thank you for that opportunity. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, and you worked with the Latino Workforce Academy, right?
Correct, and now I'm with Centrispan of Dane County.
Okay, great. Any questions at all for Norma?
Did we have a motion?
Oh, sorry, yeah, we do need to do a motion, if someone could do a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, same about Julia. Any further questions at all? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, she's got it.
So no, I am very happy that Norma can join SIDA. She live in a part of the city where we need more representation, and because you have lived in that part for 15 years, you're going to bring another perspective on how they're seeing that we need to do in economy development in that area, so I'm also representing the Latino community in Fishbury, so thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
All right, see nothing else? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that was approved, great, thank you very much.
Inspiration, the term is taken a year correct?
It is because someone left early, and so she's taking the rest of their term, and then she'll be up for reappointment after that, yeah. All right, next is the public hearing on the mayor's proposed CIP capital improvement plan. I've got a few people that want to speak on this. I believe Ron Gaddy, if you would like to speak first.
Well, I've been mostly to find information about, I got the letter May 20th, and we're on Floran Drive, I've been here since 92, and I couldn't get an answer back from the engineer. I tried three times. I talked to Dakota, which is an assistant to the engineer, and he kind of described it to me, but he said the engineer would answer the questions, so I don't know. I can't say for or against it, I don't really know exactly what it is. The issue is that people are pumping, and it's usually, it's a couple of people are pumping in the winter, and it flows in a really cold day, ice is there, and you guys know the problems with it. We're kind of upstream from the main pumpers, and I really don't want to be assessed, you know, or however this is going to be distributed if we're not impacted. And at the very head of the street, I wanted to point out, there's a person who lives on the corner of Floran and Cheryl who pumps year-round, and that's upstream from all of us coming down Floran, and a simple solution would be for that guy to just put his hose on Cheryl where there's a drain in the curb, right there, and for the first three houses, we wouldn't be impacted at all. And $90,000 sounds like a lot, I don't really know, but if we could put one storm sewer drain halfway down, right underneath, right below, it's like 2788 is the main pumper, and a person who pumps in the winter, and if you put a storm sewer right there in the curb, I'm wondering if that would be cheaper than $90,000, and that would probably, they probably pump 90% of the water in the winter. So it's something to consider in the costs, but again, I don't know exactly what you're doing, and even how wide that easement is that they're going to potentially dig up.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So right now, there's a project in our budget to try and fix that. We don't know the exact solution yet, and that's something that staff will be working on, but this is just saying that this is in the budget, there's money put towards solving this. We see it as, we know it's an issue, and we know that people would like something done here, and so this project is in the, what's called our CIP budget to do it. I don't know if it's next year, what year, I can't remember all the details.
24.
Okay, so we don't know all the details yet on how we're going to solve that, and I would imagine that, I mean, part of that is working, getting feedback from people who live in that area, but if you don't want to have any, you know, have the flooding solved, and you don't want that project in there, then you can let us know that, but I think that you'd probably want something to do.
Yeah, I have to chop through about three inches of ice that freezes from upstream to me, and the people at the base of Floran are really hit hard by it, I know. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, next I have Mark Matthews.
Sounds good. Good evening. I'm in favor of the proposed evaluation, which hopefully leads to work done on Curry Court. We've had flooding, I've been an owner of the, one of the buildings there, that is three-unit, for about seven years, and every year, every spring or heavy rain, it floods front yard and backyard, all the way up to the building itself, on all sides of my building. Simple ditches, like most people have, not even curb and gutter would probably help greatly, so I don't think we're talking about huge cost, but it's a nuisance for everyone, and everything uphill comes not right down the street, and the street's busted up as well. It's just, it's devaluing the properties there, including mine, and I'd appreciate some help in resolving it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Can you repeat the street? I'm sorry, could you repeat the street that you're on?
Curry.
Curry, Curry Court?
Curry Court.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I have Keith Hammersley next.
Good evening. I'm not sure if I'm in the right timeframe, but we're talking about Lacy Road also?
Yeah, that's one of the other projects in the budget right now.
When is that scheduled to get started, in 2021?
So Sine Road is, yeah, next year. This year, we're gonna, the next few months, we're gonna start doing the design of what we want it to look like, and we'll get neighborhood feedback at that point in time.
Okay.
But it's scheduled to be next year when we actually reconstruct it.
So basically, I'm way ahead of things here.
I don't know, it sounds like you might want it redone, you just have details on what you'd like done.
And I guess, I was just going to bring up one thing that one of my neighbors, who is a business owner on Lacy Road, questioned, the south side sidewalk, on the south side of the thing, because they're going to have a, they're going to have a multipurpose walk or path along the north side, the full length, which connects to the bike trail, and she wondered why, and I wondered why there would be a sidewalk on the south side. But I'm way ahead of things. Design hasn't even been done.
But you do like us doing the project?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. Thank you. All right, Diane Lunsmeier?
Hi, I live on Floran Drive, and I'm down towards the end of the road, and I've lived in Pittsburgh for about 40 years. So it is just terrible. My house, the first one, after the two homes that are pumping year-round, even in the winter, so I get huge ice buildup in the end of my driveway. It's hard on the car, the suspension, sometimes you have to go out, and the rear end will dip down, and then you have to go real slow, and then the front end comes down. It's, and it's a safety hazard. I've slipped more than once, and there's nothing that can be done. You can't dig that up, you have to, you can try even with a sledgehammer, my neighbor did that one time, and they still can't crack it up. So it's huge, and I have a question. Where are we legally supposed to be running the sump pumps, out into the front or in the rear? Is there an ordinance for that?
I don't know, I don't know if there is, but I think it can happen both ways.
I know my sump pump rarely runs anymore. When I first moved in, it did all the time, I thought I was pumping everybody's water, but right now, it hardly ever goes on, but I'm assuming that's because the two houses prior to mine were doing most of the emptying out into the road. And I don't know how many more winters, I mean, it's hard. It's hard on the driveway, it's hard on the car, it's a safety hazard, so I would like to see something done, but I too thought maybe we'd get information tonight on what's going to be the cost of the homeowners, how is it going to be done, that type of thing, but, so whenever there's another meeting, I certainly would like to have input.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
To answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah.
You're good, Pat.
Okay, to answer your question, the sump pumps are supposed to be run into your property, not onto your neighbor's yard, or directly into the storm sewer, so you could run them like into the middle of your property where they would slowly drain either into the lawn or slowly drain into the road?
I think they can also hook into the storm sewer, though.
We would, we could check.
Well, let's let Public Works.
Yeah, it's Public Works.
Answer that, yeah.
I don't think there's any way to do that at this point, is there to hook into the storm sewer?
It'd be...
Individual homes?
Yeah, I think it's underground, like you have to have it gone underground and put into...
Yeah, you can't, you can't run them on top of the ground into the storm sewer. If you have a connection underground, you can do that.
Oh, is there anybody that does at this point?
I think so.
Really?
There's a lot of people who don't, though, that's why I don't know that it's really, that you can't do it. A lot of people do it, and if you're not supposed to, then you just don't enforce it.
We'll definitely get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Gabriella?
Just a point of order on this, are we going to be able, this is my first public hearing, are we going to be able to get some, the contact information for the, for the, our constituents?
Yeah, we can get that, yeah.
We can follow up, because I'm the alder for District 2, so was Julia, for Floran Lane, and I'm interested in following up with, with all of you that are in Floran Lane. So you can send us an email to us, so we can follow up, because we can, we elders, we need to put amendment to the, to this capital improvement plan, so if you want us to, you know, to do, to bring this, you know, instead of waiting for 24, bring it, you know, a couple of years before, so, and talk about some solution, you can send us an email to both of us, okay?
All right. Deb Patterson, did you want to speak? Okay. It's, yeah, I'm not sure, you're on Floran Drive, so I'm guessing that you want that project to happen to get the flooding, maybe, depends on the details, all right? And then Joanne Jensen, who just registered, and she's saying this is about Sine Road reconstruction. She doesn't agree about, around about at the corner, which would be at the corner of Sine and East Cheryl, and she doesn't want sidewalks in front of her house, because there are plenty of bike trails on the other side of the street. Talking with her, I know she is in favor of redoing Sine Road, and as we do, you know, the details, we're going to make sure to reach out to everyone in that area, but those are a couple of concerns she had with the Sine Road reconstruction project. And then I also got an email from Andrew Brunner from Pittsburgh, and he's a resident of Pittsburgh, looking at Sine Road and the uptown crossing, and having spoken with most of my neighbors on this matter, we have some recommendations for construction like you to consider. Email's a bit email, I need to echo my comments, so he's got, again, some considerations. I did email with him and let him know that as we're doing the design of this in the next few months, that we'll get feedback from residents as well, but, you know, he has concerns about the speed, making sure that there are safe crossings for pedestrians on Sine Road, and all things that we're going to take in considerations redo Sine Road, so he does want to do that project, and he, we already have his information, and we'll continue reaching out to everyone in that area, assuming it stays in the budget, which I think it will, but you never know. That, I think, is all the people who want to talk about the CIP. I know people are here for the poll thing, and we'll get to that in a minute here, but if I missed anyone, let me know. All right, good, I will close the public hearing. I don't have anyone else that wants to speak on a non-agenda item, so I can go to the consent agenda. First, I need a motion on the consent agenda. To approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, and I believe there's some things that people want to pull out. Julia?
Yes, I want to pull out number three and number seven.
Okay, so the Tid District and Madison Metro, all right? And then Gabriella?
I'd like to pull off the minutes.
All right, the May 26 minutes?
Yep.
All right. Also... And then I also need to pull off number four. All right, anything else? Pulling a lot of things off. All right, so we have one, two, three, four things, so all of, any of everyone that wants to approve everything that we didn't pull off the agenda, the other, there's about six items here, say aye if you want to approve those items.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, nay? All right, now we'll go through these one at a time. I have the minutes first, Gabriella?
Yeah, so the May, we actually approved the May 26 minutes at the last meeting, so I would say table this, and then we can take a look at the June 9 minutes next time.
Can, do we have to table indefinitely, or should, can we just not do anything with it?
We can do to a date certain.
Okay, yeah, if you just want to postpone to a date certain.
Okay, well, we did, we did pass the May 26 minutes at the last meeting.
Yeah, but I think since it's on here, we still have to, even, it's passed, it's just saying, because it's on here, we just postponed, and we'll never bring it up again.
So what is it, what is the...
Postpone to a date certain.
Okay, I'd like to postpone till a date certain.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving to a date certain, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that one's taken care of. All right, next is number three, Julia, this is...
I want to refer this one to SIDA. We have a meeting on June 25.
All right, so would you like to make a motion to add SIDA and then approve?
Yes, I would like to, to send resolution R-120-22 to the SIDA Committee to.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor of approving, referring this out, and adding SIDA to that list, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, nay? Am I nay? All right, didn't think so? All right, that one is also referred out. This next one, 12220, I just had to fix the park commission date. It says July 2nd, but they're meeting on July 9th, since the 2nd is so close to the 4th, so if someone could make a motion to approve with the park commission meeting on July 9th instead, that would be great.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor of approving with the new date for park commission, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, that one is approved. And then, was it Gabriella or Julia, number seven?
I would like to refer this one to the finance committee.
All right, so if you can...
I move approval of resolution, I...
Rule of three, I guess.
I would like to add the finance committee to refers to this resolution, R-126. Second.
All right, all in favor of referring 12620, but adding finance to one of the committees it refers to, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, good. And then, do you want me to move up the other item first before you report? All right, so I know that there's a lot of interest in the polling places, if someone would like to move to take that up now, the people who are here can go on their way.
I'm going to move to move resolution R-11820 up to right now.
Perfect, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor of moving that up to now, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and opposed, nay? All right, then we will do that right now. First, I need a motion for this. Before we can discuss, we have to do a motion.
So I move approval of resolution R-11820 of resolution combining words for the August 11, 2020 partisan primary election in the city of Fishburg and County, Wisconsin.
Second.
All right, second. And for those of you who might be watching, that doesn't mean that we're going to approve it, we can vote it down. We just got to make a motion to discuss it. I believe finance talked about this, didn't you?
Yeah, we, we voted down in finance.
Okay, you denied it?
Because we have new information.
All right, so Tracy, why don't you tell everyone what's going on here?
First, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time out to discuss this issue, and that staff is recommending that we table this resolution indefinitely or fail it. Part of the election process is to prepare for all scenarios. COVID-19 has added a new scenario, and up until this year, scheduling enough people to work at the polls has not been an issue. At the time this resolution was drafted, only 44 election inspectors were willing to work at the polls. Based on this and additional factors, like the council having to approve combined polling locations 30 days prior to an election, and not having the first scheduled meeting in July, if combined locations were going to be approved, we knew it would have to be acted on on the June 23 meeting or shortly thereafter. We didn't feel it was right to put the resolution of this nature on the agenda as a direct referral, and opted to place it on the June 9 consent agenda. That way, everybody was aware of the problem we were facing, and what would be coming up, and that this is something that really needed to be addressed. Since that time, the resolution was drafted, the clerk staff has been doing a lot of reach outs to past election inspectors. Sarah and Amy in our human resources department have been promoting our online employment application for election inspectors on our, on our website. Jeremy and the FAC TV staff have been advertising the need for election workers on their show. Lisa, our administrative assistant, has been sending out information on our social media platforms. For those reasons, and including, you know, council members helping by reaching out to your constituents with this problem, and making them aware, more people have come forward that are willing to work at the polls, so we're now at 68 people. And those numbers are continuing to increase as the word gets out, so thank you to everybody for that. And if, if you're watching this now, and you're willing to be an election inspector, you know, we'd love to have you, reach out to the clerk's office. We cannot do elections without you, so, so please reach out if you're interested. So I've crunched some numbers, and for how many election inspectors we would need to staff our locations, ideally 85 would be, would be wonderful, but we could easily do it with 77. And the reason for this is because as absentee ballot requests rise, which we are now at 4,142, the less people we would need to staff the check-in stations, and basically, people would just be processing absentee ballot requests at these polling locations. That, in addition to this type of election and the timing of the printing of the ballots, combining locations would prove to be more difficult based on the fact that the proper ballot would need to be placed in the proper DS 200 machine, and that would require complete separation of locations within one building and/or room. So basically, if you have two polling locations combined into one location, they still have to be ran as two separate polling locations within that one room, and that can be, that can prove to be a little bit more difficult with these type of ballot styles needing to go into the, the proper tabulating machine. We would prefer to have all polling locations up and running, you know, this will help with social distancing as well as not creating voter confusion as to where your polling location has changed, you know, getting the word out to them if they, you know, they didn't get the notice, they didn't see a blast on social media, going to their regularly scheduled polling location and seeing a sign up there and say, hey, you know, your polling location is moved, you know, that just creates a lot of voter confusion, so we prefer to have all locations up and running, if possible.
Before I get to the public comments, can you just clarify one thing to, for people before they speak, just if they have this question? I know we talked about this, but you have zero interest, desire, plan to combine in November, correct?
Yes, the reason that we're not looking at combining at all in November is because of the social distancing aspect. We're going to have a lot more people that are going to be coming to the polls in person. That being said, you know, we're facing staffing issues now, which are improving very much so, thanks to all the reach-outs, but we're going to need additional staff come November, just because of the additional people that are going to be coming to the polls.
And then just two other things that we talked about, I want to make sure, you talked about these, this, there are city, other cities in Dane County that are combining polling locations, correct? So this isn't a rare thing.
No, I did do some reach-outs, and there are some municipalities that are combining. There are some that don't have that option, and there are some that are just kind of waiting, doing the wait-and-see approach to see if they can get enough. I didn't want to wait for that wait-and-see approach, I wanted to bring this issue forward so that it could be addressed.
And then just the last thing, I also know that you looked to see the races in this August election, and Mark Miller's seat is, has a contested race, which is only like three or four wards, so a pretty small part of the northeast part of the city. And then I believe you also said Sandy Pope Roberts has a, someone going against her, and I believe she's the southeast part of the city, so not a very big part of the city, if I remember right, even has a contested race, but I know you looked at that, I believe, right? Okay. All right, just want to make sure that, I know we talked about that, I want to make sure you mentioned that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so now we have some people that want to speak, so I can get to this. Katie is online, why don't we start with you, Katie? Oh, we can't hear you yet, though.
Oh, she's muted.
Thank you.
There you go.
That's better. I'm going to speak to the council, I should probably actually speak, and you should probably be able to hear me. So the more I learn about what you've already been thinking about, the less I find I want to say, but I'll give a few brief remarks, nonetheless. So, my name is Catherine Coza, and I am a resident of Pittsburgh 2nd District. I write to express my opposition to the Pittsburgh City Council resolution reducing the number of Pittsburgh polling places. COVID-19 is a serious threat, we must ensure a fair election while minimizing the number of infections in our community. Reducing the number of polling places from four to one is unlikely to achieve that goal. Reducing polling places is likely to increase crowding at the remaining polling place, which is likely to increase voting-related COVID-19 infections in Pittsburgh. Furthermore, though the crowd at the sole remaining polling place may be higher than usual, overall turnout for the election may be lower due to the hassle of getting to the single polling location. The situation would be detrimental to both voter enfranchisement and community health. Instead, Pittsburgh should do everything in its power to encourage absentee voting and make in-person voting as safe and convenient as possible. As the Wisconsin Election Commission has already approved a broad mailing of absentee ballot requests, my remarks today will focus on minimizing risks related to in-person voting. To make in-person voting as safe and convenient as possible, Pittsburgh should retain all four polling places. The more polling places there are, the more convenient it will be for people to exercise their right to vote. Additionally, the more polling places there are, the fewer people there will be at each polling place, which will likely lead to fewer voting-related COVID-19 infections in Pittsburgh. Therefore, a higher number of polling places is likely to result in a lower number of voting-related COVID-19 infections in Pittsburgh. How can the city of Pittsburgh encourage more people to become poll workers, allowing all polling places to remain open? Pay them well, and ensure that they have high-quality, personal protective equipment. The cities of Pittsburgh's current salary for poll workers is $8 per hour. That pay is terrible, I'm sorry to say. Under these circumstances, poll workers should be paid $24 per hour. Under these circumstances, poll workers should be paid twenty-four dollars per hour, ideally. Doubling the pay to sixteen dollars per hour raises the pay to a living wage. Tripling the pay to twenty-four dollars per hour recognizes the health risk that poll workers are taking to keep their neighbors enfranchised. This is a small price to pay for democracy and health, and I firmly believe it is a price worth paying. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I have Jen Shapki. Shapki? Almost.
There's not many people who get that one right, so. I'm Jen Shapki. I am a resident of Fitchburg. I live in the Corey Hill neighborhood. I'm treasurer of the Corey Hill Neighborhood Association, though I'm not here representing them, I'm here representing myself, just to be clear. I'm coming to speak to you in opposition of R one eighteen twenty. I appreciate what I heard, that it's most likely not going to happen. I still would like to raise some concerns, and they're mostly related to equity, not COVID. So I'm really worried about the impact of any kind of resolution like this on the ability for everyone to vote, for everyone to have access to a polling place. To reduce four down to one, to even have that on the table, is really concerning to me. Not only creating confusion around your location, not only setting up a dangerous precedent for what could happen with future elections, such as a very large and important election in November, there's access to a polling location. So we in Fitchburg, we have a public transportation system, and it doesn't get you everywhere you need to go in the time that it should take you to get to go to where you need to go. It should not take someone hours to get to their polling location. They shouldn't have to walk to get their polling location. So I would really insist and hope that the council would think about for any future consideration where we would think about reducing the number of polling locations, that there'd be an analysis done on the impact based on public transportation access to all of the locations within Fitchburg, to that one location. And if it eliminates one voice, I don't think it's worth it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Wendy Hathaway.
I have to throw out all these remarks that I wrote because I don't know. I just want to say, so I'm a volunteer with the League of Women Voters, and I'm a poll worker. Hi, Tracy. And so this issue is really, really important to me, and I wanted to come to speak in opposition of consolidation, but it sounds like that's probably being taken off the table. A couple of things that I'll still just throw out there that I would echo the other two residents who spoke is the issue of access. I think we definitely need to keep the four polling places open in August and November, but I really look forward, especially leading up to November. I know that there's been discussion that there would not be any additional polling places or that the location of the polling places would not be examined until after the census and any redistricting. But this city is in desperate need of more polling places and more polling places that more voters have more access to. It is very difficult for a lot of voters to get to their polling place, and I think that's really just such a shame. And so I would really encourage looking if there's anything to do in November, especially if there's a way to get a second location, a second official location for in-person absentee voting, for early voting. I would really urge everybody to take a look and see if that's something that's possible. Something that you brought up too was the issue of precedent. I think that this made me really nervous. I understand, Mayor, you mentioned there's not very many races on the ballot, and other communities have done this, but I think that we should be a leader in Dane County, and I don't think the number of races on the ballot should dictate how many polling places there are because people tend to vote as a habit. And I think we need to get people in the habit of it. We need to make voting easy. It is so hard already to vote in Wisconsin. I don't think that we, as a community, need to be setting up additional barriers. So I appreciate that this is looking like it's not moving forward, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. All right, I have a bunch of emails to read, but I think that's everyone that wants to speak, of the public, anyway. All right. It's going to take a minute or two or thirty. All right. Mayor Richardson, I'm a homeowner in the Jamestown neighborhood in Fitchburg and became aware of the proposed resolution to consolidate Fitchburg's four polling places into one. I'm very concerned about the proposed resolution for several reasons. First, our polling place has already recently moved from the old firehouse in the corner of Cape Pack and King James to the new firehouse on Marketplace Drive. For those of us in the Jamestown neighborhood and King James Way area, this was a significant change, as many of my neighbors do not have permanent means of transportation, rely on public transit. Additionally, the polling place on Cape Pack and King James allowed for us to vote in our neighborhood, which provides a sense of ownership. Our neighborhood is already in a small corner of a very large district. Through this location, we often already feel more connected to the Masson area than Fitchburg. Second, consolidation of our polling places may create long voting lines and confusion for those of us in the district. Yes, it is easy to look up your polling place, but again, transportation and childcare may be significant issues for those in my neighborhood. If the polling places are consolidated, you very likely lose significant and diverse population of Fitchburg, who is already underrepresented. Lastly, I understand the concerns and challenges of finding poll workers and sustaining four polling places. I suggest advertising the need for workers through social media, TV, radio, et cetera. I believe it is assumed that you have enough poll workers, and this is not an issue. I'm confident our community will step up and assist, but you have to give us the information. I'm confident that our alder, Joe Maldonado, representing us well at the common council meeting. As a Fitchburg citizen and a proud member of the Jamestown neighborhood, I strongly oppose this resolution. Thank you, Erin Thorvoldson in Fitchburg. Mayor Richardson and other person, Gerhart, and really everyone, I am against the Resolution R one eighteen twenty combining wards for the August eleventh, twenty twenty partisan primary election in the city of Fitchburg, Dane County, Wisconsin, as this reduces the opportunity for voters to get access to voting booths so that they can exercise their right to vote. This seems to be becoming a national trend, and I am worried that this will be setting a precedent for the November general election. We need to keep the voting locations as we have them now. If you need volunteers to assist with working the polls, then count me in. Please consider my power as part of the vote director for the June twenty-third meeting tonight. Sincerely, Ronald French from Fitchburg. Greetings, Erin. My name is Jason Atkins, Fitchburg resident since 2015. I was notified by email today by one of our new elder persons that there is a push to minimize polling places in our city. I could not be more disappointed. Same voter suppression tactics used around the country would happen in my own district. For whatever reason, the right to vote must not be infringed upon. Cutting costs, cutting costs always happens when it's affecting normal people. By how they delta rich and affluent in this area will be negatively affected by that. Lack of available poll workers, more understandable, but truly virtuous people would not let that stop them from ensuring a free and fair election. When trying to hinder that is doing so for selfish and corrupt reasons. Erin, the US is becoming more authoritarian by the day, by the minute. I hope you will read this letter aloud to all of the power in this room and understand that when you remove access to vote for one, you do it for all. And we are all done with duplicitous politicians taking the power entrusted to them and using it as a weapon against your constituents. But no one, R one eighteen twenty. Thank you, Jason Atkins. Please do not consolidate our four polling places into one. Construction makes a mess to get over there, and that construction project has been going on since I moved here. Please let your people vote, not add additional barriers. Thank you, Rihanna Weiss.
Hello. As a citizen of Fitchburg, I would like to make it known that I oppose R one eighteen twenty. Fitchburg is a diverse community, and given the current conversations surrounding race and the fight against voter suppression, consolidating polling places, for whatever reason, sets a dangerous precedent for future elections. Do not believe that this reflects the kind of community my essence and the surrounding area seeks to be. Furthermore, it allows those in power to retain their positions unchecked by picking and choosing who and which votes they make a priority. This is a slippery slope and doesn't bode well for the future of our country. I urge you to consider this as you make your decision, as this country was founded on democracy and the equality of all, including our votes. Thank you for your time, Katie Basket.
I do not believe that consolidation of polling places is the best choice. I personally signed up to vote absentee, which is how I voted in the most recent election. However, I feel this consolidation of polling places causes confusion and some instances voter suppression to those who have difficulty getting to the polls. I have lived in Samhull in Fitchburg for twenty-five-plus years. Here's an example of my recent frustrations with the voting process. I needed to renew my license and decided to get a real ID. I'd send away in wait weeks for a copy of my birth certificate, of course, if he involved, request a new social security card online, make it away time, and dig up a copy of a twenty-year-old divorce decree to prove my name. My social security card and license already had been name updated decades ago. Why is this necessary? Why do I bring this up? There are people who have a right to vote that may be held back, now more than ever, by having to pay just a few dollars to obtain necessary documents. These same individuals are likely to find having less polling places a transportation cost issue. More polling places also increases the ability for individuals to socially distance during a pandemic. I see from the video that committee members have the opportunity to follow guidelines. Voters deserve the same opportunity. I also seem to be dealing with a group of science disbelievers in the public who pointedly don't mask or follow other guidelines. Less polling places, the more likely you are to be exposed. An absentee ballot or witness signature is required on the envelope. This was my biggest voting issue. Trying to get a witness signature while following safe-at-home was a difficult process. I recently retired from a position as a microbiologist, where one of my responsibilities were performing molecular viral testing. I don't believe anyone has determined that second infection wave will not happen, and in fact, if it does, is likely to be in fall, maybe even November election time. Once again, people will be doing damage control, causing sudden election changes with which the public will not keep current. If a second wave hits, it will likely overlap with influenza season, potentially worse than the first wave. I feel a better use of time and money if we focus on streamlining the absentee voting process, especially eliminating the witness signature, giving out detailed information for individuals on how and where to obtain necessary documentation, detailed step-by-step information for voters on how to upload. Focusing on getting all registered voters signed up for absentee voting while in advance of November would be a proactive move. The goal should not be to match previous election turnouts, it should be to help individuals easily exercise their right to vote. Thank you, Kathleen Kuchenbecker.
Good evening. Voting is a fundamental and more importantly, constitutional right. At the most basic level of implementation, the Constitution set forth a specific set of rights that are guaranteed. Our court mission as Americans is protect and defend those rights their founding fathers were so wise to enshrine and exalted status and the greatest example of democracy in the world. As such, the fundamental right to vote should never be on the budget-cut chopping block. And as our community leaders, you should be actively spearheading poll worker volunteer recruitment efforts. We voted for you to represent us and to ensure our rights as citizens. Now's the time to step up and do it. Say no to R one eighteen twenty. Three voting citizens in my home all oppose the resolution and will hold you accountable during your own reelections. This is a fundamental issue and a deal breaker. Do not limit access to polling places. We need more, not less. Thank you for consideration of this issue. Respectfully, Robin DeVries from Fitchburg.
Dear Mayor Richardson, we wish to express our concern and opposition to R one eighteen twenty that your city council is scheduled to consider this week. After careful review of this measure, it appears that you are seeking to consolidate wards one through four, five through nine, ten through fourteen, and fifteen through twenty polling sites in your city into one singular location for the August eleventh, twenty twenty primary. According to proposal, the rationale for this consolidation is to save the city and its residents money. You have also cited there's a shortage of available poll workers to staff the primary. The proposed site for the consolidated polling places for the primary is the Wyndham Garden Hotel Bankroom two nine six nine, Cahill, Maine, in the eastern part of Fitchburg. This change would make it quite difficult for residents with limited transportation, especially in the Fitchburg neighborhoods of color. I understand that access to polling places has been a longstanding issue in Fitchburg, as you have had no polling places in the communities of color and the nearest polling places are miles away. Voting is a right for all Americans, and we urge you to rethink this proposal. Sincerely, Reverend David Hart and Kirby Mack, President and Vice President of the Blacks for Political and Social Action of Dane County.
Mayor and Fitchburg City Council members, I have seen that there is a resolution for the council meeting on Tuesday, six twenty-three, to have only one polling place for the August election on Fish Hatch Road for the entire city, rather than having a second polling location on the west side, as previously discussed. This homer wants to go on record, the only one polling place for the entire city of Fitchburg is unacceptable. Every issue of the Fitchburg paper includes multiple statements about how good it is that Fitchburg is a growing city. So why I have to ask, does it make sense to some of the council to reduce the number of polling places during an election? If Fitchburg is growing, then we need more polling places, not fewer. Elaine McElpine from Fitchburg.
Dear Fitchburg City Council and Mayor, I'm a resident of Fitchburg, located in the Dunn's Marsh, L.A. Drive area. This community is largely made up of marginalized people that have been heavily impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. People in our community already have a harder time getting to polling places and voting with Fitchburg only having four polling places. This is due to many not having transportation, having to work hours that make it hard to get to polling places in the time that they are open, and voter ID laws, name a few. Reducing polling sites will only increase those issues and suppress voting in our community even more. It will also increase the risk spread of COVID nineteen with more people waiting in longer lines in a smaller area. Ask you out to please vote against this proposal and look for other ways to increase access to voting for everyone in our city. Thank you. Kirsten Hustleman from Fitchburg.
Good morning, Mayor Richardson and Fitchburg City Council. I'm ready to express my opposition to R one eighteen twenty, which seeks to consolidate all four polling locations in Fitchburg down to one for the August election. Realize this is a smaller election, and voter turnout will be less than larger elections. I also understand that finding poll workers may be more difficult. To that end, I personally have volunteered to be a poll worker again after really enjoying my experience during the April elections and seeing all of the safety measures put in place to make in-person voting a safe experience for poll workers and voters. I live in District One on Genoine Road, and I oppose this resolution because I know it will make voting more difficult for those who live in my neighborhood and those who that live even further west. For those who do not have reliable transportation, particularly those who live on the far side of the far west side of Fitchburg, having to go to the Wyndham Hotel location will likely mean that more people would choose not to vote. I checked the Metro bus schedule, and from my house, it'd be a forty-five-minute bus ride to get there. Forty-five minutes, that's not right. Please do not consolidate voting down to one location and disenfranchise voters on the west side. Thank you for listening. Kim Crafton-Hour from Fitchburg, District One.
I would like to voice concerns towards the consolidation of polling places in Fitchburg. I oppose the consolidation of polling places. Ours in the United States and Wisconsin is already littered with voter suppression, and this will only further that. I live off of Sunwell Highway on the edge of Dunn's Marsh. I primarily commute by a bike. Moving the polling location further away would make it more difficult for me to practice my right to vote. Additionally, we are still in a pandemic and likely will be come the next election. Truly think consolidating all of Fitchburg into one location to vote is really a good idea right now. It is my understanding the stated reasons for closing the polling locations is to save money and a lack of volunteers. As a twenty-seven-year-old, I think there are many people in my demographic that would be willing to work or volunteer at these stations, as long as it is a straightforward process and they know about it and how to help. Voting is also being regarded as the citizen's most basic right in the US. Using cost-saving as an excuse for anything or adding a basic right should never be considered. The only way I think a consolidation like this could be justified is if all money saved is utilized in expanding efforts in absentee ballots. No one will remember or care in ten years if you save Fitchburg a little money, their rubber policies and people you stood up for. Tanner Reichel.
With this increased exposure to COVID nineteen, I also think we're disenfranchised voters who don't have access to reliable transportation. I will volunteer to work at the poll so we can keep more polls open. I definitely do not support this resolution. Sixteen-year Fitchburg resident, Shalisha Johnson.
Hello, I'm emailing to express my opposition to Resolution R one eighteen twenty, which would consolidate the number of polling places in Fitchburg. Thank you, Danielle St. Louis from Fitchburg.
Dear Mayor Richardson and City Council, my name is Rachel Glazza, and I'm a resident of Fitchburg, Wisconsin. While I'm unable to attend this evening's common council meeting, I am voicing opposition to R one eighteen twenty, the proposal to consolidate polling places for the upcoming August election. It is a responsibility of the government to be open and accessible to the people, particularly when it comes to exercising their constitutional right to vote. The significant challenges already faced by voters this year due to COVID nineteen and additional barriers to participation in electoral process only further disenfranchises those with limited options for exercising those rights. Without further substantiation of cost savings with measurable data or projections provided by the city clerk as support evidence for this proposal, the projected savings, a mere three hundred and four dollars for one election, does not away the potentially harmful effects this may have on participation. Sincerely, Rachel Glazza.
I have adopted Wisconsin as my home since two thousand and eight and lived on Big Bow Road since early twenty twelve. The possibility that my neighbors would miss the opportunity to vote due to a consolidation of polling locations concerns me greatly. R one eighteen twenty is a short-sighted proposal, lacks ingenuity, creativity, and concern for citizens' fundamental rights. I appreciate the effort to increase poll worker incentives by a hazard pay, but that just won't be enough. On March twenty-third, the state of Fitchburg sent a call for help for poll workers to support the demands of the primary election those less than three weeks away. I don't know the response received, but in the midst of that moment's chaos, I'd be unsurprised at any number. Compare that to this moment, we have a solid opportunity to train poll workers remotely, Compare that to this moment, we have a solid opportunity to train poll workers remotely, plan for each polling location's logistics, and make a better voting forum physically possible with personal protective equipment for workers and citizens. All of that opportunity, and I see no evidence that the common council has seen or acknowledged this existence. I see no proposal or offer of enhanced transportation or improved safety measures for all polling locations. Improving voting logistics as a dry run in the August partisan primary helps solidify strategy for our general election in November and for every subsequent voting opportunity in the future. We've never been in this position. What happens when we are in the future? What happens the next time your voters want to vote and there is another massive scale pandemic? Take this opportunity to improve voter safety, improve poll worker safety, and increase confidence in our democracy for this and all future polling events. R one eighteen twenty is a proposal will disenfranchise my community by forcing people into massive lines at inconvenient locations during a public health emergency. Would you rather look at three blueprints and make a good plan for every citizen now and in the future? Or for the sake of saving some money right now, would you prefer to abandon your constituency, eliminate the people who asked you to represent them, and hope the next voting cycle will be magically better? Do not pass R one eighteen twenty. You can all do better than this, and I know you can prove it by creating a much better proposal for your voters. Respectfully, Nathan Delisle from Pittsburgh.
To whom it may concern, I would like to add my voice to speak out against the proposal to consolidate polling places. To move people's polling places further away from where they live is tantamount to voter suppression. A lot of lower-income people would be negatively affected, people that don't have vehicles. If this goes through, shame on the city of Pittsburgh. We have better than that. Everyone deserves to have their voice heard and their voice counted. Is my fervent plea that Pittsburgh will not fall prey to the voter suppression that is plaguing this nation. Ray President Sealy. I think from Pittsburgh, but I don't know.
Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing to express my opposition to the consolidation of polling places for the upcoming August election. As a Jamestown resident, this is a drastic change from our previous neighborhood location. As a resident with a vehicle, this would be an inconvenience. For those without reliable transportation, this would be a hardship that would, could be considered voter suppression. Always maintaining a West Pittsburgh polling location, I think it is important to put forth a greater effort to ease the burdens that make it difficult for west-side residents to vote. The most important way to do this would be to assist these voters in getting properly registered for absentee voting. Another needed step is to provide an early voting location in the area. My biggest concern is that August would set a precedent for November. I worry that reduced accessibility to voting in August would be considered good enough for November. Although many may not be concerned about the August election, as a trial run for the very important November election, we should be using this opportunity to increase our residents' ability to vote, not to increase their burdens and cause confusion. Sincerely, Kim Morris from Pittsburgh.
The proposed plan to consolidate four Pittsburgh's polling places into one for the August eleventh primary and beyond would pose an inordinate hardship on me and many other Pittsburgh residents. In this age of a renewed awareness of the many systemic ways people of color are disenfranchised and marginalized, the last thing the state of Pittsburgh should be thinking of doing is taking an action that would have unquestionable gluttonous implications for people of color. Please keep all four polling places open, not only for the August eleventh primary, but also for the November elections and beyond. Respectfully, Ozzyoma. Sorry, I probably butchered your name.
As a resident of Pittsburgh, I strongly oppose Resolution R one eighteen twenty, which proposes consolidation of four Pittsburgh polling places into one. This change would make it incredibly difficult for residents with limited transportation to have access to the polls. This resolution would essentially be suppressing the vote of those who are socio-economically disadvantaged, those whose voices go increasingly unheard and are underrepresented due to voter laws such as this resolution that suppresses the vote of the disadvantaged. This resolution is decidedly un-American and goes against the spirit of democracy. Sincerely, Christian Waters.
As a Pittsburgh resident in the Jamestown neighborhood, I firmly oppose R one eighteen twenty as it clearly disenfranchises the voters in some of the lowest-income areas of the city. Our area was already given significant hurdles to voting by the city when I removed the polling location from the boundaries of the ward and placed it significantly outside across two very busy and dangerous highways. To further move it miles to the east during considerable construction projects is irresponsible and disrespectful to the people of our neighborhood. This would significantly impact many people, including but not limited to parents who have to find child-minding options for their visit to the polls. Disabled must rely on alternate transportation and the extended distance can create cost hurdles for those who may not qualify for assistance. People who work and while by law given time to go vote may not be able to extend that time between work and picking up the children to go the extra distance required to vote, particularly if any wait is involved. People who travel by bus, Route fifty-nine only runs once an hour, and it takes at least twenty minutes to travel between the Jamestown neighborhood and the location proposed. That added in the time for a wait and return journey would take an hour at least to walk that distance. I must assume in charity that this is not being proposed with underlying malicious intent to disenfranchise voters, rather primarily out of concern for COVID nineteen liability and that there will be, not be sufficient workers to man the polls. However, the former can be addressed by simple requirements such as masks and extra cleaning. And as for the latter, much could be done at this time with such advanced knowledge to recruit poll workers who would be willing and able to make arrangements and be trained by August. Has any effort been made in that direction before such a step that would create a dangerous precedent is considered? I hope that, as people of goodwill, the mayor and council will extend their inquiries thus. Sincerely, Kat Wagner from Pittsburgh.
We should not consolidate polling places for the August partisan primary election. During this pandemic, my husband and I have been working from home with our two young children. We would stay up at night planning out how we would rotate between our meetings and would complete each lesson or activity with our daughters for the next day. It was mayhem. In the midst of all this, I received my absentee ballot for a most recent election. Ordinarily a routine for me to complete that ballot and get it in the mail, but it became just another thing that got lost in the shuffle of our current situation. I completed my ballot on election day and jumped in my car and dropped it at my local polling place. I say all of this recognizing the unbelievable amount of privilege tied to these words. My husband and I have good jobs, the necessary technology at home, two reliable vehicles, everything in place to make this easy, and it wasn't easy. This privileged experience is not the case for many, and that's without consideration of the current pandemic. My mother was a single mom with two young kids who relied on public transportation. Addition to, a decision to close her local polling place would have been enough to keep her from voting. Every voice matters. The decision to consolidate polling places would disproportionately impact families in low SES and PLC. Do the right thing, make voting accessible to everyone, don't make it harder. Thank you, Christina Fallon.
I am a homeowner in the Jamestown neighborhood in Pittsburgh and became aware of the proposed resolution to consolidate Pittsburgh's four polling places into one. I'm very concerned about this proposed resolution. First, our polling place has already recently moved from the old firehouse in the core of Cape Pack and King James to the new firehouse on Marketplace Drive. For those of us in the Jamestown neighborhood and King James Way area, this was a significant change as many of my neighbors do not have permanent means of transportation or rely on public transit. Additionally, the polling place on Cape Pack and King James allowed for us to vote in our neighborhood, which provides a sense of ownership. Our neighborhood is already in a small corner of a very large district. Due to this location, we often already feel more connected to the Masson area than Pittsburgh. Second, consolidation of our polling places may create long voting lines, confusion for those of us in the district. Yes, it is easy to look up our polling place, but again, transportation and childcare may be significant issues for those in my neighborhood. If the polling places are consolidated, you will very likely lose a significant and diverse population of Pittsburgh who is already underrepresented. I understand that there are challenges to funding and staffing, but fair access to voting has to be a paramount priority for our community and government. I confident that our elder Joe Maldonado represents us well at the common council meeting. As a Pittsburgh citizen and proud member of the Jamestown neighborhood, I strongly oppose this resolution. Thank you, Tom Thorvaldsen.
One, I am a Pittsburgh resident. Two, I oppose R one eighteen twenty. Three, this resolution will disenfranchise the most vulnerable voters, particularly those with limited transportation over our disabled, working, or on fixed income, particularly residents on the western end of the city, allied, and West Verona Road. Four, it will cause confusion and set a bad precedent for future elections. Five, I am willing to serve as a poll worker. And six, you must consider every citizen in all areas and economic states. Thank you, Carola Gaines from Pittsburgh.
Our family has owned our home in Pittsburgh since two thousand and eight. We used to vote at the fire station near King James Way. It was great to see many who may not have voted be at the polls because the poll was in walking distance. I say all of that because voting is a right. But if you limit the polling place to one location, you make it a privilege by excluding or making it farther for the entire community. In the current climate that we are in with COVID nineteen, there should be more places available instead of one for all to pile in or wait in line. Also, Wisconsin is the worst in the nation for racial disparities. This is an opportunity for Pittsburgh to do better and make voting inclusive, not exclusive. We know that limited polling places will limit voter turnout. If you vote against this, I would not vote for you and I'll make sure the Pittsburgh community knows how you voted. Sincerely, Elizabeth and Gregory Doby.
All right. That is all I have. I don't see anyone new that walked in while I was reading those. So if anyone now on the council wants to speak or if you just want to vote and this down, we can do that too. Gabriela, oh wait, we got, oh yeah, we got Gabriela, go ahead. Dorothy got you on the list.
I'll just make a quick comment to start. I just want to thank everyone. I counted twenty-eight public comments for this resolution and I'm really appreciative for every single person that stepped up to speak on this. I think when I was reading these emails and then when I heard some additional ones that Mayor Richardson read, it brings up a lot of issues around voting and concerns around voting that are existing in the community that's beyond this resolution that people are concerned about and thinking about. And I'm really very happy to see that passion. And I'm excited to see where that can take us in other, in other voting, in other voting directions. I have a few more questions, but I'll let some of the other aldermen speak.
All right, Dorothy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And I really, really appreciate everybody that sent notes and showed up to speak. I think that really makes a big difference. This afternoon, I sent amendment to this resolution that created a second polling place on the west side, which I know is the biggest issue involved. Since it sounds as though we're not going to cut down the number of polling places at all, I just also sent an email, a new draft of an amendment that I would like to make to the resolution. The first draft kept all but District One voting on Fish Hatchery Road and District One voting at Redeemer City Church on King James Way, which is just up the block from the old fire station that so, but so many mentioned. The draft that I just sent adds a new paragraph and deletes the paragraph talking about combining the three districts, and I'll read that quick. From now, therefore be it resolved under that a new paragraph that reads, given the interest received by potential poll workers since this resolution was drafted, wards five through nine, ten through fourteen, fifteen through twenty, will continue to follow the previously adopted ordinance and wards one through four will vote at Redeemer City Church located at fifty-three, fifty-six King James Way, Pittsburgh, Wisconsin for the August eleven twenty twenty partisan primary election as well as for the November third twenty twenty partisan general election. And then in, be it further resolved, I had just eliminated wards one through four because, as going to the previously adopted ordinance. So I think if we make those changes, we can do what we intend to do. Rather than just voting the amendment down, we can still use it to do what we want and I think what the people would have us do. Redeemer City Church, as they were planning it, planned it very specifically to be for the community. And they planned it to request that it be a polling place. And it is set up in ways that almost makes it ideal, even in the COVID distancing thing, to use that as a polling place for District One. The, the room arrangement and everything can be done in a way that is, is, would work out really nicely. So I would, and I know that Joe, the pulvermocker, would like to not continue using the fire station, particularly in COVID as a polling place. So it makes him happy as well. So I would like to move amending this resolution as I've described.
I'm not sure what that is, but maybe, I don't hear a second, so maybe we want to come back to it later. Joe, you, yeah, you go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. So I'm not sure to whether, you know, we should look into doing this in this, this coming election or, you know, look at it for future elections, but I think in particular the way that District One is set up. And I'm, I'm not going to necessarily speak to the needs of other districts at this moment, but the way that District One is set up, there is a, you know, obviously a huge division, like structural division when you consider Verona Road. And although I do completely support Redeemer City being used as a polling place, I also think it's important to have a centralized location for residents in the Dunn's Marsh neighborhood. In addition, and I'm, I'm wondering just on the wisdom of the council, has the Boys and Girls Club been used for that purpose before? And if so, what's the feasibility of having, say, a fifth location for voting, given the fact that, you know, if you lived in Shalley Gardens, if you lived in Belmar Apartments, if you lived in any, any area in allied Dunn's Marsh, you still got to get across a highway in order to, to, to vote if you were at Redeemer City. And then if it's at the fire station, you got to go all the way, you know, south past, past McKee.
Thank you. I'll say this one thing, can I, Tracy? The only thing I guess I have concern about is mixing up issues because consolidating polling locations is kind of the issue. I know that, you know, access and location, all that is a different one. I actually talked with Tracy last week about for the November election and also next spring, having some early voting days on the west side of Verona Road. And not sure if that'll be the church. Maybe we'll be, we can use the old fire station that's now owned by the county. I think to be determined, the church is, you know, a great option for that. Maybe the Boys and Girls Club for a day as well. But I know that I did talk to Tracy last week about doing that. And I know that when we're done with redistricting about a year from now, that Tracy's already said that she expects to add probably two polling locations for a total of six for the city. So I, and I, at that point in time, I'll support making sure that one of those for sure is on the west side of Verona Road, wherever that might be. So I don't want to mix up separate issues a little bit, but I do know that that is a conversation that I had with Tracy and she was actually open to that. Her, I think, previous years, people weren't as open to that. Tracy, go ahead, and I have Dorothy next.
So, so just a little history. That has always been an, an option of, or in the back of everybody's mind of having a location put back over on that side of Verona Road. What happened was when the fire station went away, there was not a building big enough to accommodate a polling location at that time. Redeemer Church was not there at that time. So the best option was the new fire station. We do have Redeemer Church. I've spoken with Chris, I've emailed Chris. He's, he's more than open to having us use that space as a polling location after the redistricting and the, and the census is complete and the annexation of the town of Madison. There is also an option of going back to the old fire station, which is now owned by the county and using that Bay Area. I don't know what they'll call it, but, but that's an option too. And that was already a polling location as, in the past. Parking was adequate there. Looking at moving a location in the midst of a pandemic right now, I, I don't really recommend that. The Redeemer Church is a, is a good place, but there's a lot of construction going on right now. The parking isn't very adequate over there. And I have not actually been inside the space. And I have not actually been inside the space. I don't know if our equipment will work or fit or the flow. I don't know about their internet access. There's a lot of logistics involved when you're, when you're talking about the equipment and how things flow with a polling location. That needs to be worked out, as well as notifying residents. But yes, this has always been an option that we're looking at after the redistricting is, is adding more polling locations because, yeah, we have a lot of crowding.
Dorothy, go ahead.
Thank you. One answer to the Boys and Girls Club is that Madison City meetings cannot be held at the Boys and Girls Club because they are not allowed to allow access to anybody who is on the sexual predator list. So that in itself would eliminate potential voters. If you, if you're on that list, you cannot be in the Boys and Girls Club, period. Another location on that side that has been used at the polling place is the Head Start up on Thurston Lane. It's now called Reach Dane. That polling place used to be used by Madison for their voters, until I pointed out that it's in the city of Pittsburgh. And our residents had to literally go past it to go find Verona Road and cross Verona Road and find their way down to the fire station to vote. That irritated me to no end. So I would, I would love to have a polling place on the east side of Verona Road as well. Both Verona Road and McKee Road are huge barriers to many, many, many people. So I would like to discourage. Again, Redeemer is set up and I can tell Tracy that whatever concern she might have as far as not having been in the space, it's not a problem. So I wouldn't worry at all. I've asked for a long time to have, to continue to have polling places within the districts. If we voted at Redeemer, this would be the only district that is actually voting within the district. I would like to change that significantly over time. Also, in the further resolved on here, it only makes this change for the two remaining elections for this year. So starting next year, we can decide again what, what we want to do. But I would like to vote in my district this year. Redeemer City is eager to do it. The fire department would prefer we not potentially infect their fire department again. I don't see a reason to risk it if we have an appropriate location that really wants to do it.
All right. Gabriella?
I have a question for Tracy. Is it possible, so I'm really happy to hear that there's that, they're in that discussion about, you know, redistricting and, and thinking a little bit more about, or thinking more about how we can adjust the polling places to make it easier for people. Is there any possibility, so like this is obviously, we're talking a lot about District One and that Verona Road problem. Is it possible to make changes to the polling locations for the November election or is it going to have to wait till after redistricting?
I would recommend waiting until after the redistricting. And the reason for that is to avoid voter confusion. If you're going to send out a postcard to everybody that would normally vote there that says, oh no, now you vote here for this election. And if, you know, the redistricting happens and we find a different location or a, a better location or multiple locations, and then they get another postcard six months later saying, no, now you vote here, that's going to create a lot of voter confusion. We had that happen when we moved from the old fire station to the Marketplace Fire Station. There was a lot of voter confusion that happened there. So I'm thinking a one and done is going to be the better option for the city, especially with the multitude of people that are going to be voting in November, to have that change happen. So.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about, I'm concerned about the change as well. And, and Dorothy, like I, I agree that that needs to be a solution. I've also been to Redeemer and I, I actually have, it seems like a good space, but obviously, Tracy, you're the expert, so I think you need to go and see it yourself. But, so I, I'm certainly like theoretically in, in support of this, but I, I don't know. I, I would be interested if, if maybe Dorothy want to propose a separate resolution so we could have a different discussion or show Tracy what you're looking at and then she can do some more research and maybe we can talk about it at a later date. I think it's too late to do it in August, or that would be my assessment, but maybe we could think about if it's even possible for November, at least discuss it and table it if it's not possible. That would be my suggestion, that would be my preference.
All right. Anything else before we vote it down? I don't want to say.
I actually have another, are we talking about the amendment or?
Uh, no, there's no second amendment, so there's no amendment.
Okay. Because I actually have a couple of questions for Tracy. And I can probably make this pretty quick. I'm just curious about, so the crux of this resolution was like a lack of poll workers. And that, I'm really glad to see that, that we're probably going to be able to staff the August election, but there's definitely still a concern for November and ideally we have more than we need so that there's, you know, because we could see a huge surge. So I'm curious what, how the council can support you in making sure that we're able to recruit those poll workers, because I'm certainly going to do outreach to the community on my own. And I, I, we just referred out a hazard pay resolution for poll workers. That's in the, that's in the agenda packet if anyone is interested. That, so we're going to consider that if raising pay would be something that would change poll workers' considerations about their, you know, the risk to their health. And we'll talk about that later. But I'm curious what else we could do to support that poll worker recruitment.
Yeah, reaching out to your constituents. If each one of you could recruit, you know, maybe 10 people, that's an additional, you know, that many people at the polling locations, you yourselves, you know, I, if you're not on the ballot, you're, you're more than welcome to work the polls just to kind of see, and that way you can kind of see how it all works too, get a better understanding of how an election works inside and out. But yeah, just getting out there and recruiting people would be wonderful.
Julia?
What I want to mention is that, you know, I like the idea that what Dorothy is bringing here to have Redeemer City Church as an, a location in the west part of Verona is something that, I know the place. I think it's a, it's a big place for a polling station. I think as a city, we need to compromise and determine what is the best option for our electors and our residents. And maybe, maybe August is too soon to have Redeemer Church, but maybe for November could be an option. But I really think that, that we need to consider this, this option that Dorothy is bringing to the plate to, to consider this location. The other thing that I want to mention is that I want to thank all of the people that they submit emails about this. I really listen and read those emails. I have a couple of texts or phone calls from president in my district opposing this. And the other thing I want to tell all the fellow alder here, that our role as a city is to serve the city, the resident, and in this case, the electors, not the other way. So we need to do the best to serve our, the people that we are here representing. And we need to do compromise and look for options, alternative and solution, especially in this, in, in this, you know, topic that we are discussing tonight, because it's very important. So I will say, people in my district, they don't have any problem to vote wherever we send them, because, you know, it's the one of the wealthy district in, in the city. But I am very concerned about the other district where people don't have access to transportation, don't have access to, you know, people to help them, even people to, there's, some people they don't even know what is absentee ballot is. So we need to educate our people, especially people that they, we, we can say, oh, we can solve everything with absentee ballot, but some people they don't know what is absentee ballot is and how to get an absentee ballot. So I think we need to do a lot of education as a city. And I want to repeat this, we are here to serve our residents. That's it.
Dorothy, go ahead.
Thank you. Julia made a big point. I don't, I didn't count, and I, I appreciate Gabriella having counted how many people we heard from. But of those, how many people talked about transportation and access to the polls? There is no bus that goes to the fire station on Marketplace Drive. No bus. There's not a way to get there on the bus. It might take 40 minutes to get from Jamestown over to Fish Hatchery Road on a bus, but at least you can go on a bus. Marketplace does not have a bus. And talking about confusion, I was around when they kept flipping and flopping about which hotels should be the polling place and what happens with the Trace Way Drive, the Fairways building. There was a period of time when those changes were being made just with very, a lot less consideration than this. We need to allow the best possible access that we can. There is not a reason why we cannot decide tonight. We cannot write a new resolution because there's not time. We have to have 30 days from the time we approve the resolution before the election day in order to make a change. That means that we need to do this tonight if we're going to do it at all. I want to actually serve the people in my district by giving them easy access to polling place. So again, I would ask someone to second my amendment so that we can discuss the amendment.
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
Thank you.
So I guess I don't, I'm still not clear what your amendment is.
My, my amendment uses the same resolution that was going to combine all four. And initially, when I wrote the first amendment to it, all I was doing was keeping the three districts, districts two, three, and four at the hotel to vote. So it'd be three districts that voted at the hotel and District One would vote at Redeemer City Church. Since we no longer need to combine any of them, what I did in this final amendment was to strike the paragraph that talks about the combining the three districts and put in a little explanation because it sounds kind of stupid if all you do is, so the added paragraph is, given the interest received, will continue to follow the previously adopted ordinance, except changing the polling location for District One.
So the point of your, your amendment is to change polling location one to the church?
Correct.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's what the resolution gets distilled down to right now.
Yep.
It has to keep the title that it had and it can keep the first two paragraphs, but just those paragraphs without an explanation of the history of it. Kind of sounds stupid if we, if we pare it down to nothing but changing voting location for one district. So I added the explanation in saying we, we decided basically to continue with four polling locations, but we want to change the location for District One. And the other three would remain as they were in the prior ordinance that we approved.
All right. Tom?
I guess I'm going to start out by defending the city and defending the city in the way that the clerk did this. And this resolution, keep in mind this 1820, that we started to discuss was due to the fact we didn't have enough poll workers. That's how this thing started. And now we're really mixing up and adding more confusion to it, is really what we're doing. The situation is, as you heard from the clerk, if you just heard her when she talked, that we're going to go back to four. Correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to go back to four, we're going back to the board. So what we're doing is status quo. Now, if the alder in District One wants to add another polling place, that's fine. But doggone it, just like Gabrielle said and the clerk said, the clerk's the expert on this, not the alder. I'm not an expert on this. The staff hasn't even looked at this. I have more confidence than the clerk. And I'm okay with Dorothy, the District One, if they'd like to have a new polling place, that's fine. Now we're really going to mix this all up now? Really? I sure hope not. I hope you vote this down and give staff time to look at it and do it right so that we can tell the citizens of District One where to vote, because I'm going to get calls next week and saying, you know, Tom, where am I supposed to vote? And I'm going to have to say, it was a cluster. It was a cluster. You know, it was a real cluster, because we're back to four. And District One wants to add one, but we may do it in November. We need to do it in the spring. Let's do it right. Let's not do it the way we're doing it here. And anybody watching this tonight's got to be eating popcorn and going back to the refrigerator for a beer. Holy smokes. This thing is, you're confusing the public, is what you're doing. Let's not confuse the public. We're back to four. We can relook at District One, which I'm okay with Dorothy. Not tonight, Joe. Let the ci, let, let's make sure the citizens know about it. And let's make sure the staff, the expertise, people we have on staff, look at it. I know all about the Boys and Girls Club. It's not in the city of, it's not in the city of Madison. The Boys and Girls Club, for the alders that don't know, is in Pittsburgh, the parking lot's in Madison. I was around when that building was built. So let's move on, call the question and get going here, because this is really confusing the public.
Julia, quick.
Yeah, so, a couple of things. First, Tom, when you read the resolution, the sheet of the resolution, one of the things that you mentioned, it was about the lack of polling workers, but there was another thing, it was, you know, consolidating work with, with, is, is, is more cost effective and there was other stuff. So it wasn't only one thing, there were a couple of things. So that one would, would trigger people to, okay. I want to understand what you mean when you say mixed stuff here, okay? I want to understand that, what you think that we are mixing here. And this is a good discussion that we need to have. I know that it may be, this, this resolution opened the door for us to discuss future polling, this polling place in another district. And I agree that maybe, you know, we shouldn't rush with this, we need to analyze and maybe to determine if by November we can have another polling station in District One. It could be Redeemer Church, it could be the, whatever, or the Head Start. But I think we need to have another one in that district and this, what we are doing here, we need to do it, we need to have this healthy discussion, we need to have this And maybe this resolution opened the door to have the discussion for another polling And maybe this resolution opened the door to have the discussion for another polling station in District One, but I think we need to have it. And I think we need to give the staff, especially Tracy Department, to look forward, to look and analyze these potential locations in District One and be sure that we can add, by November, if we can have another one there, and that one, that will be a permanent location after the redistricting. You know what I mean? So we don't confuse people anymore. That's it. But I think...
I think that's what I said.
Yeah, what?
I think that's what I said.
No, but he mentioned that the only, I want to add that this resolution here, he mentioned that not only was because of lack of poll staff, but also there was reducing, making this cost effective, and there was another staff there. So it was more stuff that triggered people to come tonight to discuss it, okay? That's it. It's not only the only, it was that.
All right, Pat's going to say something. I have Shannon, then Dorothy, and then Gabriella.
I just wanted to clarify for budgetary purposes that there's, without a budget amendment on the table here tonight on the agenda, a discussion of fifth polling location can't be discussed. Obviously, that's got a huge budgetary implication that we can't spread out that money of four into five polling locations. So that's something that really we can't discuss tonight because that would require a budget amendment.
Yeah, the amendment is to switch.
Right. Yeah.
All right, Shannon.
So I'm not opposed to having a fifth place, but my concern would be, is what happens if we said, oh, let's do this at the church, and then all of a sudden, we don't have all the necessary things we need? And then where are we at? That would be my big concern. And what I would like to see is maybe we can put it on the agenda once we kind of figure out. If the church is a great place to go, then we can discuss whether it's, we can discuss the budget, we can discuss where we, if we think it's a great place for there. I mean, I would be all for that. I'm just concerned that if we go ahead and make this amendment and put it in there, that it's going to be a polling place, what happens if we can't for some reason, like the internet and some other things that, other logistics that go into it? That's my fear, and then we'll just confuse people more. And I just don't think it's fair to our voters, but I do feel that we do need extra polling places. Thank you.
All right, Dorothy.
To Julia's point about possibly doing the August election at the fire station and then talking about doing the November election at the church, if it proves to be suitable, I do not want to change horses in midstream like that. It's going to be tough enough to set up a location to, if you look at the August election as a practice run for the November election, that's how we need to look at it. Wherever it happens in August is where it needs to happen in November. Two other points that I wanted to make. I don't know if people have been on my side of town recently or not this summer and have had the joy of going through the road construction along McKee Road. There is not a way to get from anywhere in my district to the fire station without going through that major construction project. There is literally no way to get there unless you drive up and around the Belt Line down Fish Hatchery, that's right, Fish Hatchery Road is a major road construction as well. So another reason for saying, let's go with the church, yes, on my knowledge of the church, a lot of us have been there. I know we have. The, among other things I haven't mentioned, and I'm not certain people are certain, the chairs in the sanctuary are intentionally movable, so the entire sanctuary can be bare floor in addition to the meeting room and other rooms that are available there. Again, there's no reason not to. They stream their services, so they got to have decent internet regardless. I also wanted, I haven't mentioned yet, that I heard people talking about early voting on the West Side, and I so appreciate that. It's something that I've talked about many, many, many times in the past and have never gotten any kind of traction with the city. So I'm glad I didn't have to poke pins in people to get that conversation started again. So whoever it was that started that, I really appreciate that. And please, very, very, very seriously, allow my district to have easy access to their polling place this fall and in November.
All right, Gabriella.
Yeah, so my original issue with this amendment as it was proposed was voter confusion, that it would be confusing, that the polling place would change. And so because that was my initial problem with it, my preference today would be to vote down the polling place resolution as it's written in the agenda. That being said, I do love the idea of considering a different location on the other side of Verona, and what I would ask you to do is write a resolution, maybe we could even put it on a consent agenda for next, our special meeting next week, and we can refer it out. And I do think that's going to be too late to have a change for the August election or an addition, but we could maybe consider either a change for the November election or an addition of a fifth polling place for the November election. I would really love to have that discussion, but I, my, what I would like to do today is just vote down the resolution as a whole. So that's where I stand.
And I can work with staff to get something, I mean, probably at this point, wait until maybe in August or after the primary to discuss November more on that. Okay, sir, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate exactly everything that Gabriella just said, that I think voter confusion is a real concern. I without a doubt want to avoid any hurdles that people encounter from voting, but I just think changing the location at this point would just confuse people. And I know I've gone to the wrong polling location when it changed, just because it's hard to communicate that change out, and I'd hate for people to have that as a hurdle where I think it makes sense as a future addition. The more polling locations and the easier we can make it, the better. But at this point, I just, I don't think it makes sense to change for the August election.
Randy, then Dorothy after that.
Sure. I don't think there's any question, at least this body has expressed that they're, that we need additional polling in District One, and I'm all for it. But we do have a city clerk who is well-versed in her job. She needs to look at the location. I know, Dorothy, you mentioned that they stream. Well, I appreciate that. But let's rely on our staff, our city staff, that is what they're there for. If you want to place a resolution and move it forward, you'll have my vote. But I do not believe the August 11th, we should have, just go forward and stumble our way through this new polling. November, terrific. You have my vote. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Dorothy.
All right, I'm going to want to hear from Tracy again. Specifically, I want to know how she would feel about changing locations between the two elections. I would also like to know whether, if we put together a resolution and she has a chance to go tour the church between now and our meeting on the 30th, whether that is still timely enough to pass a resolution to do this.
So you're asking if I'll have time between now and next Tuesday to look at the polling location to see if it'll work?
I presume you want to see the place, to see if it, to verify whether or not...
Well, the way the resolution, so there's a noon deadline on Thursday, and I don't know how to phrase this without sounding like I'm against it or anything, but we are in the midst of having to get out 4,142 absentee ballot applications by the end of this week.
And I will be there with you tomorrow.
So it's not really something that I can see, I can fit into the schedule. I can definitely do it for November. And that will allow time to get information out to the voters that their polling location has changed. We can send out, you know, numerous mailings because people tend to move a lot, especially for the apartments. We can track the apartments and send out one mailing, you know, after it's been approved, and we can send out another mailing, you know, maybe a month before the election so that people know that they don't go to the Marketplace Fire Station anymore. I would feel more comfortable doing that. My staff is going to have to field all the calls that come in, wanting to know where their polling location is, and I just think they'd be better prepared, and we'd all be better prepared if it was something we looked at doing in November rather than August.
So you're comfortable doing it at the fire station for August and then switching to the church for November?
I would be comfortable exploring the Redeemer Church to see if it would work as a polling location and moving forward.
Because, you know, I'm wanting to protect you by saying we should not change horses in between. But if you're saying you would be comfortable doing that, I feel better.
What I'm hearing is that she doesn't want to change, changing in August would be a problem.
August would be a problem, November is definitely something that we can look at.
All right. Hold on, I got Joe and then Julia. Go ahead, Joe.
All right. Point of clarification, and Tom, you might accuse me of causing more confusion, but I'm going to go ahead and ask because it'll influence how I vote today. So for November, and this would also, I think, involve Pat, getting a budget amendment passed, and just follow my line of thinking here, if we were to look for a fifth location, say one in the surrounding area of Dunn's Marsh, and I know there's a lot of pretty large businesses and spaces in that area, in addition to having a polling place in Redeemer City if all goes well and if staff assesses that it's, you know, a doable place, that is something that's, is that something that's in the realm of possibility for an amendment slash budget resolution? And I may not be phrasing everything correctly, but is that something that is, that is within the realm of possibility for the November election?
It is in the realm of possibilities. I think I would like to talk with Tracy and Misty in regards to that. There's other issues. There's staffing, additional staffing, another polling place would add another 20% of staff. And then budgetarily, we would need to make sure that we were in line with our budget for the end of the year from, and I would need to check with Misty.
Tracy, go ahead.
And just one other thing I thought of, you know, if we're talking about adding an additional polling location, we're already having problems staffing the four that we have, and you're talking about trying to staff five locations. So you need to think about that. And in addition to the fact of having a fifth location, equipment needs to be ordered, and that takes time because there's not a lot of manufacturers that are working full bore, and if there isn't equipment readily available to order and have delivered, we have to wait for that to be actually processed and made and programmed properly.
Julia. Did you have a follow-up, Joe?
Yeah, understood. However, just given the, what is at stake in November in many ways, and just given, yeah, I did a little Googling on my own of what it would take to get from even to Redeemer City on a bus or on, or by foot from the furthest corner of Dunn's Marsh, and it's, I came up with 40, 40 minutes, 40 minutes on a bus, or 36 minutes on a bus, 40 minutes by foot. So I understand that there are costs, and I definitely, I definitely empathize with staff, and I want to do all that I can to be a supportive alder and a supportive citizen. But I think, you know, just, just given my time living in this community, the people that I know, and me being a pretty dialed-in, well-informed voter, I've been confused a lot of times in my, you know, 12 or so years living here when it comes to voting, and I think for, you know, somebody who has less access to information than I do and less access to transportation than I do, you know, you're talking about somebody's ability to practice their right to democracy and the right to vote. So I just want to put that out there and say that, you know, I'm willing to walk side by side with you volunteer, you know, find, and I understand there's monetary costs along with staffing costs, but, you know, I think given the show-out we had just within a week's notice, the amount of increase we had in volunteers and the amount of people that are truly invested in this, I'm willing to find a way.
All right, Julia.
No, what I want to mention is that for, I think we need to wait after the census is done and how we are going to redistrict our city to think about how many more polling stations we will need, and then we are going to budget for that, because I agree with Tracy, when we put another polling station, we need to buy equipment, and that one takes time, money, and we need to put in the budget, so there is a process. So I think for now, we need to, we know that we are going to add more polling stations after we have the census and after the accession of the town, and we are going to have a better idea how and where there are going to be those new polling stations. So for now, I think we need to, you know, compromise, Dorothy, you know, no August, look for November for Redeemer Church, is the city staff think that is a good option, and then move forward.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
I was just going to add, we used to, I don't have it in my head anymore, but I used to know the cost of replacing the machines because we've replaced them since I've been on. We would, to add another polling place, we would have to buy not only a regular, the machine that you feed the ballots into, but we would also have to buy an ADA polling machine. Neither of those are cheap, plus we would have to buy a set of poll booths and all that. So I consider it cost prohibitive and not entirely necessary. The problem for my side of town to get across Verona Road to go vote has existed as long that the 20 years that I've lived here, that's always been an issue. And yeah, so people who know and help voters know the number 242-2000 is Union Cab. The county has a program that pays people to use Union Cab or pays Union Cab to give people rides to polls. So that gets used a lot in this area. So again, I, we need to make it as easy as possible, if it's possible to talk about November, and let it stay... If it's possible to talk about November and let it stay at the fire station and go through construction and everything else for August, then we can do that. Still not my preference. We apparently don't have time to write another resolution for next week. Tracy said there's a timeline for Thursday when we have to make this decision by. So if she's comfortable with November, I'm willing to go with November. And I'd really rather let my people vote in their district in August already. They aren't going to be more confused than they already are.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. First, we need to vote on the amendment, which is to change District One's polling location to the church, New Redeemer Church. So all in favor of the amendment, which would be changing District One's polling location?
Roll call, please.
Polling location. You would say aye if you want to change, nay if you don't. Why don't you go ahead and roll call Tracy?
Alder Radafrada? Alder Clouter? Alder Gerhart?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Schroeder?
No.
Alder Strassman? Alder Udell?
No.
Five to three.
All right, so that's a no. All right, so we're back to the original resolution changed. And so for this one, I think, I know what the results are going to be, but yes, vote would be that you want to consolidate to one polling location. And a no is that you do not want to consolidate to one polling location. So all in favor would say aye. And all opposed would say nay.
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 All right, so we are back to four locations for August. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, going back up the agenda now to administrator's report. Pat?
I think I forgot what I was going to say. No. All right. Onto the City Hall opening, the soft opening. We're still looking at July 6th, which is the Monday after the Fourth of July holiday. City Hall itself will go from eight to noon. All departments will be staffed for public interaction from eight till noon. The senior center will also be open from eight till noon, but that will be by appointment only. The park and rec office and the police front counter will be open the same hours as City Hall, eight to noon, and be fully staffed. The library will be open eight hours a day, and those hours will vary. So please look at the website for the hours of the library. There'll be eight hours during the day. And the reason the library is going to be open eight hours is to try to spread the patrons out over a longer period of time. I guess we generally have about 600 patrons on a given day. We didn't want to make those 600 patrons visit the library in a four-hour window. So that's where we're at with the opening. I'm also pleased to state that to date, we've not had a case among staff or any of their family members, so that's really good news. And we hope that continues.
Pat, can you just speak real quick to what you were asking staff and residents for in terms of wearing masks when they come in or when they're at work? Can you speak to that? Because I know we've given some guidance to staff.
Yeah, we are going to be coming out with a memo to the public next week in regards to appropriate social distancing, what we're requesting people to do but not requiring them to do. And that is, we are requesting that they do wear masks when they're interacting with the public or the public is interacting with staff. We're requesting that they maintain the six-foot distancing. We are requiring that all rooms like this council chambers be limited to the number of allowable people based on county recommendations. So right now, the council chambers is at 20 people based on occupancy of 40 in here. And so those will be the things that we're looking at. We're also going to be cleaning our restrooms on a more regular basis. We're going to be cleaning all of the public areas, the counters, the door handles, items like that on a more regular basis. So there's an internal team that's working on this soft opening and eventually the full opening. And we'll continue to keep you updated, but keep an eye on the website for that memo for the public. And we hope to at least see you in City Hall on a limited basis starting July 6th.
Got a quick question from Gabriella.
What is the, do you have a policy for staff-to-staff interactions? Are you asking people to wear masks when they're in the building?
We're requesting that they wear masks when they're outside their office area but not requiring it.
Okay, so are the offices all individual offices or are they shared?
No offices are shared. There's cubicles that are, I shouldn't say no offices are shared. Some of the police department offices are shared. The majority of the workspaces are individual.
Okay. And what is the, is the memo going to address the fact that if conditions change in Dane County, if we start seeing an uptick? Is that, do you have a criteria for where you would close again?
There, yes, we would rely on Dane County Health Department. If it looks like there was a spike, we would revert back to probably the same status we're in right now.
And is there, are you providing masks to employees that don't have their own? Is that?
All staff have been provided with masks and, well, at least one mask. We've had numerous donations of masks. Our human resource director, her mother has given us hundreds of masks, and we're actually giving them to the public, too.
Oh, fantastic. So we can offer them to the public if they don't have one and we ask them to wear one? Okay.
Correct.
Fantastic, thank you.
What else?
Just a few other things. One, the parks, facilities, we had a lot of requests in terms of restrooms. We're preparing, and some of the restrooms, I believe, are open as of today, but we're preparing all the shelter restrooms for opening. They will also have more ongoing maintenance than normal. They'll be cleaned on a daily basis, not just cleaned but disinfected and everything that we're requiring of our building restrooms. The splash pads being prepared for an opening. We're shooting for the Fourth of July weekend, but we need to make sure that it's functioning appropriately before we let people in there. And we are also, at the splash pad, are going to request that people practice social distancing while we're there. We can't police that facility as much as we can our buildings, but we are going to do our best there. The other facilities that are going to be opening up for rental will be the baseball and softball fields for practice only, no games as of yet. Basketball courts, half courts will be open. And the community center rentals will begin after July 6th. And they will have to comply with occupancy restrictions also. So again, we're at half occupancy right now. That means that the Oak Hall room, instead of allowing 100 people, we will allow 50 for an event. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Questions? Dorothy, did you have a question? I saw your hand up. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Pat if they're planning on putting spaced-out picnic tables and things around the splash pad and asking families not to congregate on the concrete pad itself.
That's a good point, Dorothy. We are going to actually move some of the existing tables from the pad into the grass. And we're going to spread out to that area of the park as much as possible where the inclusive playgrounds planned for. We're going to put some additional tables out there so people can utilize the splash pad but won't be as close to each other when they're eating or resting or whatever they're doing.
Thank you.
All right, then moving along to plan commission. You got one item here. Tom, do you want to make a motion on this?
I'll move resolution, the plant commission's resolution, R.125-20. CS 2348-20, a resolution approving certified survey request, CS 2348-20 by Kenneth Lambresfield, agent for the Park Bank. The approval of a certified survey map to combine two lots on property at 2802 Fish Hattery Road at slots seven and eight. Plan, commission approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Do you want to speak to this, Tom?
I was on vacation.
Oh, that's right. You were on that. So we, the Park Bank has two lots, and we just asked them to combine them as they are redoing their headquarters on the corner there. And so this was kind of at our request that they just make it, makes it a little bit easier in terms of putting everything together, is there like to redevelop that? So approving plan commission, no concerns or issues or anything like that. Any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. All right, Public Works, Sarah.
I make a motion to approve resolution R.11120, approval of Supranet fiber license agreement.
All right, signed it. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve? All right, what's this about, Sarah?
This is while during the Fish Hattery construction, Supranet is asking if they could install 12 strands of fiber within the conduit that's being installed underneath Fish Hattery. Excuse me, I misspoke. They're offering to give the city 12 strands of the fiber that they're installing. It would be, let me see here, sorry, there... 144 fiber count altogether. They would be offering the city the 12 strands. I apologize. It's being installed because the juice plant is requesting the fiber internet connection. It's something that the city of Fitchburg has done in the past with wind fiber where although at that point when they had an agreement with wind fiber, we didn't necessarily have a plan to use the fiber, it ended up being favorable as we installed the fire department. So it's the same kind of situation right now where we don't have a plan to use the fiber, but it's a nice benefit that we're getting to have the strands provided to the city if we allow Supranet to use our conduit. And per Matt, he didn't anticipate it being kind of a limited leasing option for the future. So installing fiber within Fish Hattery conduit.
I just have one question. Would that make it more likely to provide access to fiber internet for everyone that's along North Fish Hattery Road then?
It would. Good question because that was something that Matt also called out, is that if someone along Fish Hattery wanted it, it's easier for them to just plug into it once it is in that conduit.
Randy?
Well, this came up in Finance, and of course, I had some questions. And instead of delaying, because I understand there's a July 1st agreement date, they are placing 144 fibers. They're placing it to one location. We're getting 12 fibers out of that. 12 fibers doesn't go very far. And I can tell you that in the world of as fiber hungry as we are. And I guess that's probably here nor there. It depends on what we're going to use the fiber for. But we're placing conduit, correct? We're placing new conduit, two, three inches? So I'm assuming that, but Supranet, Supranet, they're utilizing that one conduit, that one three-inch conduit. Do we have the ability to pull additional fiber through since it's ours? Or have we just stranded that entire conduit at our cost?
We did ask that question within Works, and they said that there still would be room.
Okay, they're able to blow another fiber through?
Yes.
Okay. Because I don't remember the diameter.
I have downed three two-inch conduits.
Three two-inch, okay. Because I've been assuming we placed three, two, three-inch conduits for a reason. We didn't just place it because we thought we had some additional money and we're going to place it for a rainy day. Usually those things are well laid out, especially from an engineering standpoint. So those are just some concerns I had. I just wanted to go on record, so I didn't hold it up at Finance. And we'll, once again, I'll rely on our city staff. They know what their, they know their job, they know it well, and I have confidence in them. So again, those are just comments on my part. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. One more, Sarah?
Yep, motion to approve resolution R.11520, accepting the subdivision improvement, CSM 14838, the Fahy Glen extension.
Sarah, second? All right, signed by Gabriella. And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
All right, what's it about, Sarah?
This is for the Promega Fahy Glen extension. The city engineer inspected and approved the improvements that were made. It included the sidewalks and bump outs within the packet kind of on the map that just kind of mentioned that Promega went above as to what was the ordinary. So Works was pleased and approved.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is also approved. Anything else from Public Works you want to talk about?
Phil gave a great update with all the projects that are going. I've had 17 agenda items. Everything's kind of moving along. I know within the Public Works meeting that gave that fantastic overview. I can't think of anything that would be specific, but if you do have any questions, please let me know. I know one thing, he said that the Highway M construction is still shooting to be completed before the school year, and the Fish Hattery Road construction is still going well, and that there was a new pavement switch at Greenway Cross. But otherwise, yeah, he provided a great review of a lot of projects. That's all I got.
I think if I remember right, this morning, he said one or two more weeks, they'll be done with Greenway Cross, and then they'll start working on Post Road.
Yep, I think he said two weeks. And then, yes, that was what I had noted.
Excellent. All right, how about Park Commission?
For Parks Commission, I kind of had what Pat had, is just that on June 15th, they announced that we reached Dane County Phase Two and that playgrounds, basketball courts, and Ball Diamonds were opened with the social distancing and capacity rules. And then with the public bathrooms that they were aiming to be opened today and as, yesterday. And as Pat had mentioned, just the really looking to clean them. So hopefully, kind of some people can get outside and enjoy the parks. And our next meeting, as you had mentioned, is July 9th.
All right. All right, and I know that for now, they can't open the water fountains. There's concern about people putting their face next to there. And we don't have the capability of only opening the bottle filling parts for those parks that have bottle filling. But I know that staff is looking in future water fountains that they install in parks, looking to see if they can get ones where you can just turn on the bottle filling station. So we do have that option in the future. Library Board, Randy?
We finally met for the first time since the stay-at-home went into effect. We met last Wednesday, the 17th. Very welcoming committee. And I think probably the main point of conversation was the reopening of the library, as Pat pointed out, July 6th. But prior to that, I met with Wendy, Wendy Ross, the library director. On Tuesday of last week, we had maybe an hour, hour and a half conversation, Zoom conversation. And I must commend Wendy. She's very thorough. She provided me with 12 different links of information. She explained to me how the structure works with the library and the city and state statutes and state law. And it's kind of an interesting organization in and of itself. But it was a great conversation, and I learned a great deal. And I again have to say nothing but good things for Wendy during this time that the library was closed. I mean, she's kept her staff safe, kept them employed, and she looked for nothing but ways to move the library forward instead of just shutting it down. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commission on Asian Well, Dorothy? Commission on Agent Well, Dorothy?
Thank you, the, we have not met yet during shutdown, but we were talking about a bunch of old people, including myself, that shouldn't be getting together anyway. Our next scheduled meeting is July 9th, hopefully that will happen one way or another.
RCC?
Yeah, so I've got lots of news from RCC. The Resource Conservation Commission met on June 15th last week. It was our first meeting since safer at home and we're planning to meet monthly going forward. Number one, you should all save the date, there is going to be a drive through recycling day event on Saturday, July 18th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. And we are, if someone, if anyone's interested in volunteering, we are looking for volunteers. So, I'll send that out to the Alders in case anyone wants to help out. Also, you might not know, but we actually have Green Fitchburg updates. And our sustainability specialist, Phil, does a great job sending that out. And if you're interested in those updates or really any notification from the city to text or email, on the front page of the city website, under the main picture, there's a little envelope button that says notify me. And if you click that, the Green Fitchburg is one of the options you can sign up for. And you can also sign up for any, a slew of different notifications. And I get all my notifications into text message, so I can find out when things are happening in the city. So, I highly recommend you check that out. And then, the RCC does an article in the Fitchburg Star every month. So, in the June Fitchburg Star, you should see an article called Boost the Pollinator Population and Help Save Our Food Supply. Another thing, we, they released the 2020 Recycling Guide a little bit earlier this year and it is also has a, it's in Spanish now as well. So, I can, that's on the city website and I'll also share that out on my, on my blog and my Facebook page as well. Also, the, the staff brought up a problem, the fish hatchery recycling location. There's been an incredible, there's a lot of cardboard, too much cardboard for the, for the bins. And it's probably just because people are getting a lot more things shipped nowadays than before. So, we wanted to remind everyone that we actually, you do have unlimited curbside cardboard collection. And the Recycling Guide has guidance. Basically, you just have to cut down the cardboard, place them in a clear plastic bag, up to 32 gallon, and place that bag next to your recycling cart. And you can basically put as much as you want out there. So, definitely take advantage of that if you are, have a lot of cardboard built up at your house. And then, we, I guess a couple other notes. So, the staff recently collected water and sediment depth information from ponds throughout the city. This is something they do every five years and it's the information they use to prioritize which ponds get dredged, which is obviously in the CIP, but it'll help prioritize which ones. And that's very relevant for citizens that are concerned about stormwater in their area. And then we also talked about the exciting solar news that the mayor talked about last meeting where we're bumping up from 250 kilowatts to 500 kilowatts from that O'Brien solar farm. And that's going to do a lot towards, bring us towards our climate change goals. And Phil, the sustainability specialist, is trying to get exact numbers on where we stand. And so, I'll try to report that at the next, the next, after we have our next meeting. Thanks.
All right, thank you. How about transportation transit?
Yes, so we have our meeting coming up on July 9th. And we will be talking a little bit about public transportation. And I know we heard a lot of comments in the voting, the voting feedback that public transportation is very important to people. So, I check out the agenda and see if you want to make any public comments because you can make public comments at any meeting, at any time. So, feel free to weigh in if you feel passionate.
All right, Julia, Seda?
We are meeting this coming June 25th, this Thursday.
All right, Egan, Rural Affairs?
Nothing to report, but since we have not had a meeting, I decided I would reach out to Wade and Thompson. And he and I met here in this room and had a good conversation for about an hour. I asked what my, you know, what their expectations of me as an Alder on the committee. Found out additional information about the committee itself. And he hopes to have a date sometime in the next month or two. He says sometimes it's very fluid in the summer to begin with, so. But I did have an opportunity also to sit down and talk to him about some of his other projects. And HNI was one of them and I understand that that's going to be a presentation that may come forth in the future. So, it was a good conversation, thank you.
Thank you. EMS, Shannon?
EMS, so we met last Thursday. And our good news is the respiratory calls are still going down. But however, our cardiac arrests have kind of really gone pretty high. And I suspect that's because people have been afraid to, you know, go in because of, you know, the, this whole COVID pandemic. So, if you're having chest pain and you're having problems, please do not hesitate to call and go in. And we also have, other than that, we have another meeting, I believe, July 17th.
All right, thank you. Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Meeting at 7:30 a.m. next Tuesday, June 30th. And I am, while I will Zoom, I'll probably just do a round around my neighborhood to get the bike exercise in.
All right, thank you. Tree Advisory?
We're meeting in September.
All right, Landmark Preservation, Shannon?
Nothing to report.
All right, Dorothy, Census Complete Committee?
Yep, we met on the 16th. Becky from the Census updated us on the status. As of the 15th, 73.1% of Fitchburg had responded to the survey already, compared to 74.3% of Dane County and only 68.4% for the state. So, both the county and us are neck and neck, well ahead of the state. They're going to be starting a social media push on July 6th to encourage people to reply online that have not yet. And they anticipate starting field work on August 11th. As part of that, they stop at all doors that have not responded and they will stop at least six times before they give it up. So, they're, they're going to work really hard at it. They also lost a lot of the folks that they had hired before COVID hit. So, they're looking for more people to help with the field work. And information about that is at 2020census.gov/jobs.
All right, what about Housing Advisory?
Okay, we met there on June 8th. Our main topic was a presentation by Kurt Paulson on the City of Middleton Affordable Housing Initiatives. We also discussed our action plan and requested staff to ask Council and Seda for advice on a few points. That request was mailed to both Council and Seda recently for consideration.
All right, what about Healthy Neighborhoods?
And Healthy Neighborhoods met on the 17th. We reviewed the status of the 2020 awards and we approved appropriate timeline adjustments due to COVID. We discussed the Fitchburg Fund RFP process with the United Way, including a final amount of 18,000 and is, along with tweaks to the application process. The RFP should be announced in July or August and a provider chosen in September. We also discussed various tweaks to the 2021 HNI grant program. The program in general is strengthening every year. So, that's really encouraging.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee, Julia?
Finance Committee, we, we approved the bill, the detailed review of all check issued, check number 120897-120929, dated June 1st through June 15, 2020, totaling $518,699 with 77 cents. And also, we review the P卡 transaction for the cycle ending May 6, 2020, totaling 236,735 with 22 cents. And also, we, you know, we, we review some of the resolutions that we already passed.
All right, thank you. Dorothy, Personnel?
We've got an upcoming scheduled meeting, haven't, haven't definitely decided on it yet, but either July 8th or the 22nd. We know that we have a timing problem with the 22nd because we just referred a resolution for the council meeting on the 21st that needs to go through Personnel. And we would miss that window if we met on the 22nd. So, I think we're hoping to meet July 8th, but that has not been fully confirmed yet.
All right, thank you. Sarah, Public Safety?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Yhara Bay Distillers' expanded outdoor seating as an amendment to their premises.
Second.
All right, signed in, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is for their outdoor space. They presented a drawing, they have a very nice location on Nesbit. And it's just really to encourage their event space where it'd be potentially, I think he said, sorry, now I'm getting the 30 people that, they have a clever area, this fencing has been reviewed by fire where it'll be roped off and it can be removed easily. So, just kind of encouraging their event space.
All right, and we approved a couple last meeting and?
Correct.
So, it's kind of that same program, question?
Yes.
This isn't quite a question, the, I just found out at the Finance meeting last time that the Yhara Bay actually provided the hand sanitizer for the city. Is that true? Okay, cool, I just wanted to give them a shout out, I thought that was a really neat thing they're doing. And apparently you can buy it from the, from them still, so.
Yeah, they donated a lot to the city, yeah, for elections and stuff, so we still got some for August election. All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved, all right, one more, Sarah?
Yeah, one more, like to make a motion to approve Fox Heritage Foods on McKee to expand their outdoor catering options as an seating space for tent within the parking lot. They also provided a map that allows their, or that showed kind of what they were planning for their space. It listed that, Dan had mentioned that he's lost kind of 80% of his catering business during this, during the COVID pandemic. So, this is really just trying to encourage some takeout options. They have barbecue options that they do offer at that location. So, really just focusing on expanding that premise.
All right, and I know he had to come into Plan Commission because he had not, he doesn't have any outdoor seating. And, you know, he kind of said the same thing, they do takeout right now, but wants to offer this. And because there's no events really happening, he's able to get a very nice tent actually to set up in the parking lot out there because there's no weddings and things like that happening right now. Dorothy, did you have a question?
Yeah, when I was looking at their map, it made me wonder how they plan on, because it is a little distance from the building. From what you were saying, are they planning it just to be a takeout kind of place? You can get what you want and go eat or is there going to be table service as part of it? And how are they going to work that out when it's? I don't know how far, I would guess maybe 100 feet or something from the front door of the store?
Do you want me to answer this?
Yeah.
So, they do have, they will be having table service. It's, like you said, it's not, you know, right next to the building, they'll have to, you'll have to, well, the serving staff will have to cross that little bit of driveway. They're going to put up some signage for that. They do have bathrooms though as part of the space they rent. They, because they primarily rent the basement on what used to be Fitch's, if you remember a long time ago. But they have a really nice carrying space down there, but they do have bathrooms that are on kind of the main floor. And so, they do have an access there, so people can go to that. It's not ideal because it's not right next to the building, but they are going to put up some signage just to slow traffic down to make sure that there's no conflicts or problems there. Tracy, did you have a comment too?
Not, not to change the subject, but I didn't catch who the second was, was that?
Oh, that was?
You second that, Shannon?
Shannon, yeah. And Julie, did you have a question?
Some of the question that Dorothy asked about, because, you know, they don't have a, I was surprised to see that, you know, that they don't have a physical restaurant, but they have a catering, so there. My question to, to maybe to you, Sarah, is so there is other catering company, can they do the same? We are offering the same, you know, I mean, it's, I don't know, if we have another catering company in another building and they want to have outdoor seating, can they do that?
Can another business do that?
Yeah, can we?
If they want, if another catering business wants to and have that?
Yeah, my question was, I want to?
Because they're already doing takeout, so they already are serving food out of that location. But if another business has the capability, they could?
You know, that catering companies are also, if they have a physical location and they're, you know, they want to extend their seating location outside.
They could, yeah, they just got to go through the process, yeah. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. I'll go last for reports today, we can start with district reports. And let's see, I don't think we started District 2, let's start, Gabriella?
Sure, yeah, I'll start. Okay. So, once again, I just thanks so much for all the people that spoke up about the polling place resolution. I was really impressed by the amount of outreach and I'm also really impressed by how many people like stepped up in such a short period of time to work at the polls, so I hope we can keep that going, really excited about that. Upcoming in regards to that is the hazard pay resolution I mentioned and that's in the agenda packet, if anyone wants to take a look at that. I think that should be an interesting conversation. In terms of the CIP, the public hearing was, was interesting. I'm, it seems like people, the CIP is such a difficult thing to understand, I think, for somebody that, that is just kind of like a casual, a casual listener for city meetings. So, for those people that came to, I, and that didn't quite understand the projects, please reach out to your Alders. Because I see that that's, that's my role is to help translate city issues to you because I'm the one that spends the time looking into it. So, please reach out, I hope all the people that came at the meeting that had questions will, will email us. Or you can find our emails pretty easily on the city website. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is just the importance of wearing masks. My background's in science, I'm a geologist by training, so I'm not, I'm not a biologist by any means. But I actually work at the Mortgage Institute, which is a biomedical research institute and we have virologists on staff. And so, I think a lot about, I deal with a lot of virologists on a regular basis. And we, you know, at the institute, we have put in a policy that everyone that comes in the build, in another building has to wear a mask the entire time they're in there. And then, there's more studies are coming out that's, that show the efficacy of wearing a mask. And it's, it's not so much about protecting yourself, it's about if you get infected, you won't pass the infection on to somebody else if you're wearing that mask. And, and even like, even flimsy one-time-use masks apparently can reduce transmission 70 or 80% by some new studies. And obviously, this is all coming out very quickly and there was confusion because they asked people not to wear masks at the beginning. But anyway, it's starting to become clear how important masks are. And as I sit here up on the dais and more and more people are choosing to come attend in person rather than attend digitally, I'm becoming increasingly concerned about how few of us in this room are wearing masks. And that if one of us gets ill, this constant, like this spending couple hours in close proximity to each other, talking is like how you release all those, all those, all the virus into the air. And it can very easily pass along to a group like this that's spending a long time in the, inside in a room together. So, I wanted to bring this up, I'm going to send a few articles for the council to read and I'll put it up on my blog as well for anyone that wants to read about it. But I just wanted to ask, make a request to the council that you consider wearing masks at the meetings. And I'd like you to think about it and I'm going to make that personal request. I talked to the mayor today, maybe I'll give everyone a call and just make a request. Because I do think it's important to keep everyone safe because if we get sick, city business will grind to a halt, so, thank you.
All right, Julia?
So, the only thing that I want to mention is, you know, in the intersectional seminar on McKee, you know, people had to be very careful how they drive. I am driving this, you know, maybe two or three times a week. Today was scary because I think there is a big hole and the orange, you know, cone, we are not like, you know, if you know the area, you know how to transit, you know, but if you're new in the area, you have to slow down. the area, you have to slow down, you know what I mean? Um, it's, it's getting very nice, the intersection, you know, the pond, retention pond is big, nice. Um, I know that we took a lot of tree that we need to eventually plant, or I don't know where it's a plant, but my, my question is, if you're new in the area, please slow down because there are a lot of, today they, I don't know, suddenly I went to work this morning, came back and there's a big hole. And if you're not familiar with the area, you can continue driving and go to the hole, you know what I mean? So, and I know that some people sometime, I see people speeding in construction areas, so please slow down. That one is my advice for the week. That's it.
Thank you.
And, uh, well, the restroom, I am happy in that, but already explained that we have the restroom open in McKee-Fun Park and all of that. Yeah.
Tom?
Just reminding people to make sure you lock your cars. Um, District Four, we had a number of vehicles broken into. Um, it's getting to be old hat, but, um, I'm still, I'm really keeping my eye on the district attorney and how he's handling the, well, say for now, just for now, the juveniles that are caught, how they're getting in and out of that process so quick. And now, we had a nice, real nice donation to the Veterans Park of anonymous donator, donation of, uh, five thousand dollars. And, um, that was great. Um, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Randy?
Then I, what I mentioned earlier, uh, sort of meeting with, um, Wade Thompson, Aigun Rural, and Wendy Rossen, uh, with the library. Those were outside of the committee, uh, conversations, but they were conversations that, uh, gave me an opportunity to listen, understand my expectations. And I mentioned that before, but there's one other, uh, department head, or at least, uh, it's, it's Scott Endel, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. He and I met for about two hours last week. He offered, extended an offer during the CIP presentation, uh, to any new alder or current alder, if they wanted to meet with him and understand what he does. I took him up on that, that offer and, uh, it was very interesting, uh, to, to, to understand the parks, um, and what goes into maintaining the parks and, um, the new parks. Uh, we drove the trails, which, uh, isn't something we as constituents of the, of the, of the city would do. Um, but, uh, I thought it was very interesting, if you've never done it, to take him up on the offer. Um, and we ended, ended the tour, uh, at the cemetery. So, the cemetery does exist, as, uh, it's been pointed out. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. All right, Sheena?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right, Sarah?
I just have a quick thing to, um, mention that I didn't speak up at the last meeting regarding the ongoing action on social justice and racial inequity, out of fear of misspeaking. And I have regretted it kind of ever since, just so, although I'm still uncertain of the changes that need to occur, I am certain that change is needed. And just that our current belief system is not structured to address the variety of concerns that they receive from citizens. And it needs to change to better protect, and protect and serve our citizens, especially those of color. Um, I think this requires reviewing and modifying how funds are allocated to best serve, especially those at higher risk. And I'm striving to learn more about what can be done. And I understand that change can't wait. So I do think that we should prioritize a dialogue of these issues within our community to understand the concerns, um, and to try to take action on these changes. And although I realize my words are not action, I just really want to make it clear that Black Lives Matter and change is necessary for us to move forward. Otherwise, no other report.
All right, thank you. Dorothy?
Thank you for that. I, before you came out, I, I got a couple of books out. Um, I just got a list from online somewhere that I posted on my Facebook. And I think I sent list to everyone. Um, but I also sent it to Wendy at the library and says, what, what books do we have that our residents can look at? And she sent me back the list, and it is an impressive list. Um, I don't think the entire council got that. I can forward that to you. Um, among other things, she has some really cute little bookmarks that for, one, one for youth, one for teens, and one for adults on different reading materials appropriate to those ages. The other one that I got recently is Color of Law, which talks about housing discrimination and how that happened. So though, these are both clearly on my reading list as soon as I can invent time. Um, but I, I do want to dig into those. And I will send that email to council and anyone else that is interested. Um, get ahold of Wendy and say, hey, what do you got for reading on this topic? It, it is huge, like she said. So, um, the other thing that Julia reminded me of when she talked about big hole, yeah, they, they dug out this huge pond. Um, a couple, few days ago, I had a little conversation with, um, Jack Pearson. Um, and we talked about the fact that, um, lady was just found at the bottom of a local pond just about like that. Um, she'd been in her car in that pond for the last ten years. Her family had absolutely no idea. And what Jack and I talked about was if there had been a little bit of a fence, even a little, a little fence around that, it would have been apparent that something happened. Um, and I think we're, we're kind of in the same position with some of our ponds. That one is going to easily be deep enough to drive a car into and not be seen again until the next time we need to dredge or whatever. Um, so we, we talked about the possibility of fencing, uh, probably prohibitive cost, but it maybe ought to be something that we should look at. The other thing that I've looked at recently and put in a couple of inquiries about is the fact that we've had a lot of fires recently, not necessarily in my, well, we've had one in my district. It did not start as a porch fire, but we've had a lot of porch fires lately where what ends up actually getting lit is the vinyl siding on the walls next to the porch. And then that fire could climb up that siding, get into the soffit of the attic. Those, those attics cannot have sprinklers because they're unheated and pipes would freeze. So our apartment buildings that are otherwise sprinklered are not protected. So what I was asking was if we ought to have a conversation about saying that we should disallow having that vinyl on, on, on walls for porches and patios. So that, that's a question that I asked of our planning people as well as our fire department. So I'd, I'd like to have that discussion as a council at some point as well.
All right.
That's enough. I've talked a lot tonight.
All right.
And I appreciate that.
Joe, go ahead.
First off, I want to, um, say, um, Happy Juneteenth to everyone. Um, if you do not know what Juneteenth is, um, please Google it. I'm not gonna go through the entire meeting talking about the history of it, but it's something that all Americans should know. Um, second, I want to, um, reiterate the thanks that, uh, folks on the council have given to, um, our, our residents for, for really, uh, showing up and, and making their voice heard. Um, we have very, um, engaged, very thoughtful, uh, very talented people that live in this city. Um, and I'm, I'm proud to represent them. And, um, I, I think, you know, it, it should be a goal of this council to, to ensure that we're engaging our residents to the fullest extent possible. Um, and we're, we're leveraging those, those talents and those insights that they have. Um, I'm gonna do, make a tradition. So at each meeting during my updates, I'm gonna just highlight, you know, one resident that I think is doing something cool. So, um, there is, um, a resident in my district named Danny Rivera, D-A-N-I-E. Um, she has a podcast. It's called Women AF. Um, it's her and two of her friends that talk about, uh, issues, um, related to women. Um, it's, it's enlightening as a man. Um, and, uh, the past couple episodes have been really helpful. One, one is how to talk to your children about race. Um, and the other is, uh, her interviewing her, um, husband. Uh, she's white and he's a man of color. Um, sort of about his experiences and also about, um, you know, what's going on in our world, um, lately. So I definitely highly recommend, uh, you know, folks check that out from, you know, Fitchburg resident here in town.
All right, thank you. I just got a couple things. Uh, first, Joe and Dorothy, I have for you, uh, unused ballots from the election that, uh, you can have as a memento from the elections, because you're both on that. I can leave them, uh, probably at the front desk, maybe. So anytime you're at City Hall, you can get those. I believe, Joe, we also have a name tag and a, uh, badge for you to get in the door here. So if you're in the area and get a chance to stop by, do that. And then just a couple things. Uh, one is just a reminder to all of you that, you know, staff sees and hears things you say, not only in these meetings, but also places like online. So, you know, just kind of be careful about, uh, not only what you say, but more importantly, maybe how you word and phrase things, uh, just because you want to be careful about, um, you know, accidentally, um, saying something that staff takes negatively or takes to heart and is feels, um, like they're being, being criticized or something like that. And then I just also wanted to mention, because I know that this has come up with more than one person here, is that, you know, staff here, you know, you're working with them on lots of different things, but I just want to make sure that you know that you can't really ask them to not talk about what you're discussing, especially with Pat, who's really their boss. Uh, that's their boss. That's their manager. You're putting them really in an impossible situation by saying, you can't talk about this with anyone because, you know, they, that's their job is to really tell their boss what's going on, what they're working on, what's happening. And so that's, it puts them in a really awkward, tough situation. And I know staff have felt that way about that. And, uh, that's just, you know, that they have to talk to their boss about those things that they're working on. So please don't ask them to do that because that, you're putting them in a position that really they shouldn't be put into. So just a couple of little reminders, um, that I wanted to mention. And that's all I have for now. So we already did the unfinished business. Uh, new business. We've talked about elections pretty extensively. Is there anything else, Tracy, that you wanted to let people know about?
I know I've talked quite a bit tonight. Um, just giving you a little bit of update on what the Elections Commission has done. They've made changes to the MyVote website. They have that intelligent male barcode on the outside of the absentee envelope. Uh, what that does is when the post office scans this, um, barcode, if you look into the MyVote website, your status will show as the date the ballot was sent would be the date that the post office receives it and scans that barcode. Um, you're also going to see two new features in MyVote. One is the, um, I just talked about that, the post office scanning the barcode. And then you're also going to see another feature, which is the anticipated delivery date. So, and that is also set by the post office after they scan that barcode. Uh, another change, when you're applying for an absentee ballot request through MyVote, although it's not a state requirement, you'll see a field where it'll ask you to please consider providing your email address or phone number. This is so the clerk's office can contact you if you have submitted something incorrectly or admitted information. This happens quite frequently and we have no way to contact you unless, to make any corrections unless you have that information on there. Um, also, if you upload a selfie or the wrong type of photo ID, we can check that as a status declined. You'll see that in MyVote. We'll do our best to contact you and let you know why your status is can, is can decline and what you can do to correct that. Uh, but also if you see that, contact us as well and, and we'll explain it and help you work through to, to get that resolved. Ballots are delivered and we're going to begin to send out the absentee ballots this week. Remember, this is a, um, election where you cannot cross the party lines. Um, let's see. Uh, sample ballots are out on the website for viewing. And just to kind of clarify some confusion out there for the November election, the Wisconsin Elections Commission is going to send out an absentee ballot application, not a ballot, an application to anyone that doesn't have a request already on file by September first. If you receive an absentee ballot application in the mail, we are a photo ID state. So when in doubt of whether or not we have your photo ID on file or not, just, just include it. Just include it. Uh, one last thing, staff has talked about improvements and Ruth Becker has come up with a wonderful idea of working with the Fitchburg Star, Fact TV, and social media platforms to show a picture of the absentee ballot certificate, explaining where the voter signs, their witness signs, and provides their complete address. This is a requirement for your ballot to be counted. We do our best to contact the voter to make corrections. Uh, but if we don't have your contact information, there's no way that we can contact you. So please provide contact information, even though it's not a requirement. We also added a link to the utility bills, um, to our website, to the clerk's website, to kind of keep people, to keep residents current with what's going on. Um, and just to kind of show you the absentee ballot certificate, this is where you sign and date, and that's where your witness signs and provides their full and complete address. Okay? Last thing, we've been seeing, um, independent mailings have been going out. Um, this is done by a lot of third, third parties. And while we really appreciate this, uh, they're, they're creating a little bit of voter confusion. Um, that creates additional work for our staff. So out of eighty-eight applications that we received over the past week, only six came back with, six came back completed with a photo ID. Eighteen of them had already had a photo ID on file, which is great. Fifty of them came back without a photo ID on file, nor did they provide their photo ID. So that means that we had to reach out to all those fifty people to provide that photo ID. Um, thirteen of them had already had a request on file. And I had a few calls from people thinking that they had already taken care of this, so they were kind of confused why they were getting this absentee ballot request in the mail. So just, just to kind of be careful, if you receive something like that, when in doubt, call us. Or if you send it back, you know, provide that photo ID. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we talked about a few items earlier today, we'll be bringing those forward as well. Uh, Dorothy, a question?
Yeah, for Tracy, um, we had a huge issue with ballots coming back late, uh, without a postmark on them that we had to not count. Is the post office going to postmark all ballots that they return to the city? Or how, I know you mentioned barcode, is that part of that equation or not?
I, I don't think that's part of the equation of them actually putting that stamp on there as to when they received it or when it was sent back. Um, that's something I can certainly look into. Um, you know, hopefully the Elections Commission is working with the post office on making sure that that does get corrected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gabriella?
Yeah, I guess for absentee ballots, just like a general rule of thumb, you can always return it to City Hall. You don't have to, or your polling place. You don't have to mail it back. And honestly, if you're getting closer to the election, you shouldn't put it in the mail, drop it off by hand. Uh, and Tracy, I'm curious, is, is the City Hall Dropbox the only place that people can drop it off for the November election? Or has their, or they can do their polling place on the day of the election or the Dropbox at City Hall? Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right, more to come on that. Dorothy, another question?
Clarification on that. Can they drop a ballot at City Hall on Election Day? Or do they need to take it to where the machine is going to be for their district?
Uh, preferably if they bring it to City Hall, that would be best. We could mark it as returned and then send it to the proper polling location. Either way, if they take it to their polling location, that's fine too.
Okay.
Whatever's easier for the voter.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, next, I want to just talk a little bit about TID process and procedures, just because I know next week we've got our special meeting and wanted to make sure people had some information because TIDS can get a little confusing. So I know Pat has some information, just try and help that along a little bit. So go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I did, um, email all of you that...
Um, I did, um, email all of you this summary today, and this is, Ellers is our financial advisor. They do a really good job of summarizing sort of TID. I wouldn't even call it one oh one, it's like point oh 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 one. I mean, this is a very brief description of TIDS that gives you a basic understanding of how TIDS work. A TID is a tax increment district. TIF is the finance component, component of TID, so it's tax increment financing. So the financial component of a taxing district. So what, I'm not gonna sit here and read all of this for you. Um, you can see it, this is what, uh, you were emailed today. It gives, like I said, it gives a great summary. I, what I recommend is that you read that, you know, in the next couple of days. Um, call me, or Mike Zimmerman, or Misty, if you have any questions in regards to TID. And we'd be happy to, uh, uh, to answer those questions. TIFs, as, as the mayor mentioned, i- is very complicated. I think I spent, uh, almost a full year in grad school studying, you know, various components of TID. It changes state to state. It changes based on the legislature from election to election. So there are a lot of moving parts, but we did wanna give you some basic understanding of what it was prior to this special meeting we had next Tuesday. I also wanted to show you the area, and we have a map here that we're gonna throw up on the screen. I hope everyone can see that, these things when you're sitting remotely too. Um, this area is actually the, uh, TID district that we're talking about amending. And it would be for the area north and east of, um, East Cheryl Parkway. A law, that's in blue there, so it's north and east of East Cheryl Parkway, that's in the blue. There would be one, two, three, four, five, six parcels that exist there in the blue. And then it would be everything to the west of Lacy Road. In addition to those parcels, it would be the Gerlock property, which is located just to the west of the railroad tracks on East Cheryl Parkway. Um, you, you're close with your cursor there, Scott. Little further south, right in there. Those two parcels, uh, would also be included, uh, in the site. And one reason those two parcels are gonna be included in the TID amendment is that tho- that site is currently contaminated with some ground contamination due to prior uses in that area. So those are the parcels that we're looking to add, um, to the, the TID, the tax increment district out there. You'll notice that other, um, businesses that have purchased land out there and have fully developed, besides Avante and the apartments, our Phoenix is just to the south in the brown area, where you see the Phoenix symbol. And then to the north of that, UW Health has purchased, uh, all of that acreage for future, um, medical facilities. And, um, we were anticipating some development as soon as this year, um, with the crisis we're going through, that has been, uh, put back a little bit. Um, so I, we wanted to give you an idea of what area we're looking at for the amendment, along with some good summary information. Again, feel free to call, uh, Mike, Misty, or myself in regards to this, uh, TID and, and how it works. And, uh, we'd be there also on Tuesday to explain everything to you there also.
One quick, uh, change or difference, Pat. I believe that we're actually putting the entire triangle in the TID, so it's not just the Gerlock property that's kind of on the corner of East Cheryl and Sine.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's the, there's like a blue building, that's that narrow spot, and then the gas station, and then there's also the, it, there's like a oil storage or something like that. It's, there's a, like a weight building and a lot of, uh, gravel parking. So that whole triangle along the railroad is actually added, because there's some contamination on other parts of that as well. And so if there become, if there's something that comes forward in those areas, we expect that they'll want some help cleaning up that contamination to actually have something happen there.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for reminding me of that. That was a, that was a late addition, but a, a very good addition, given the, uh, contamination, so. Uh, are there any questions for myself or Mike at this point in time?
And I think the biggest thing, and you know, and it talks a little bit about it in the document you sent out, and why we have to do this special meeting next week, is because of the twelve percent thing in there, where once this new assessment's come out in July, I think, or beginning of August, in August. Um, we'll have new valuations, and what we have in our TIDS, we expect is gonna be at that twelve percent cap. And once we hit that twelve percent cap, we can't make any changes to any TIDS, we can't add any TIDS, we can't do anything until we close a TID. And we project it's gonna be about two years before we close the next TID. And so we wanna make sure that, uh, we got this done, because there is a proposed project we're gonna learn more about that is part of what we're adding, and so we wanna make sure that that redevelopment happens, because it's a great opportunity to redevelop a site that is contaminated right now, and I think is gonna be something that that neighborhood really likes and is very supportive of, when I can actually tell them who it is.
And that's a good point, Mayor. The, um, the actual closer, closures that we're looking for in the near future of, of the TIDS, one would be the Promega Research Park TID, TID four, which includes a lot of the grounds of Promega, along with the Tech Park that's located south of Lacy, um, and west, uh, to the, I'm sorry, to, and to the east of Fishatory Road. So that'd be one TID. The other TID that we're looking to close in close timeline proximity would be the Orchard Point TID, uh, located off of, uh, Verona Road in PD.
TID six.
Yep, TID six.
There's actually.
That'd be four and six, yeah. Yeah. So that gives you a little bit of summary, but, um, again, feel free to call and dig into us for questions. We'll, we'll be happy to provide anything you, you need.
Yeah, I think it's the thing that's kind of challenging, or I had a hard time figuring out, is it TID, TIF? And TID is kind of the big overall, here's an area, that's all part of it, and then the TIF are the individual projects in that big area.
Yeah, it's the financial component, yep.
I wanna make sure to give you a little more information before next week. Um, if you have any quick questions, or, but like Pat said, you know, contact him, Mike Zimmerman, myself, if you have any other questions the next week, so there's a lot going on next week.
Yep, and that'll be next Tuesday, and I believe there's three or four meetings, all li- four meetings all lined up, so. Not all of you are on, in all of those four, but.
All right, then don't see any questions, so we can move on to the last two items here. Uh, let's see, this one looks like it's Public Works, Sarah, do you wanna do a resolution for this one?
Yeah, make a motion to approve Resolution R one one six twenty, approving agreement for subdivision improvements in the fifty-six thirty-three Lacy Road CSM.
Second.
All right, uh, you wanna speak to this, Sarah?
Do you mind speaking this one?
Did you approve? Did Public Works approve it?
We did.
Okay.
Uh.
You want me to?
Our, ch- ch- shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't put down my work, or my notes on this one.
So this is, uh, right up the street here, there's a house that is on like one point five or one point eight acres of land, and they are subdividing that into four lots, because it's such a big piece of property. And, uh, as part of that, they have to put in sidewalk, I can't remember what the side street is, but also on their part of Lacy Road. This is kind of the last part of Lacy Road that doesn't have sidewalk. And, uh, Public Works is, uh, requiring that to go in now. They wanted it to get pushed back until there's actually development that happened, but, um, it's really better to do it as soon as possible. And there are, you know, potential projects kind of in that area that I think we're gonna want that sidewalk in sooner than later anyway, actually. And, uh, it's just kind of a pretty common pr- uh, practice, and, you know, even though they'd like that to be waived until a later date, um, staff is saying, no, we really want that right now. Is there questions or kind of time?
Mayor, is this the same project that we, um, pulled out, I think, in Plant Commission? And we said we could wait on the sidewalk?
Plant Commission recommended waiting, but we didn't have the authority to actually do that. It's, it's under Public Works, and Public Works said that, no, we don't want it right now.
But the sidewalk goes nowhere, if I'm thinking right on this property. If you go to the west, there's no more sidewalk.
There's a small stretch where there's not a sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk. And then you go to Richardson. And, um, okay. This is one, um, for other council members, if you come out of, if you come out of Richardson and make a right onto Lacy Road and go to the east, there's no sidewalk. Then you go down about a block, I'm roughly, and this is where, maybe it's two blocks, but you go down a block or so, and there's no sidewalk there, there's no sidewalk on that side of the street. And then this house is located, um, a veteran, a old timer from Pittsburgh, uh, passed away, and this, I know this, uh, individual purchased it. And in Plant Commission, we had discussion on this, and we said, no sidewalk du- due to the fact that it goes nowhere. On the other side of the street, uh, on the, this would be on the south side of the street, and, um, I understand what staff is saying, but I'm not agreeing with them. It doesn't go anywhere. Um, and to put the sidewalk in right now, just doesn't make any sense in the future. If we need it, if we need the sidewalk, that's fine. But, um, boy, you're taxing the individual in reference, oh, does this mean to Mayor that the other individuals along there, from where this comes out onto Lacy, to then, I'm gonna go in the other direction. If you go to the, if you go to the west, then they all have to have sidewalks up to Richardson Street?
No, we're not requiring any of them right now. It's in our.
Just this one?
Just, yeah, it's in our instances that when they kind of do something like this, like subdivide it, that's when we require that to go in.
Okay, I stand corrected, the others don't have to.
Not right now.
I sure as heck wouldn't vote for that, to tax all those people for sidewalks. No way. You, we're just talking about this one piece.
Just, yep, just where this lot was subdivided, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hey, Julia?
So we are doing this so they can sell all the lots separately, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yep, they'll have the four individual lots.
The four individual lots, okay.
And there'll be sidewalk there then. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
No.
All right, I still think that is approved. All right, next one, this looks like it's probably another Public Works one, Sarah.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one twenty-one twenty, accepting subdivision improvements in the north portion of Phase G in the plot of Terravessa.
Second.
All right, do you wanna speak to this?
Uh, for this one, sorry, I'm just. I don't remember getting this one, sorry.
This is, do you want me to speak to?
Yes, if you don't mind, I've.
Yeah, it's just out in Terravessa, uh, there's a lot of houses that are getting finished up, and, uh, when we accept the improvements, that's when they can move in. And so there's a lot of houses that are getting finished, and most people wanna move into their brand new houses, you might expect. And, uh, it's, it's rare, it's, I think it's rare that we accept part of a phase, but we are in this case, just because there's so much growth going in building going on out there. We don't wanna hold up those projects, especially with the school. I believe I saw online that Mariposa was moving into their building, and so that will be opening up fairly soon as well. And so we wanna just kind of, um, keep this, these projects moving, and for those people that have their houses finished, let them move in. So that's why we accept these improvements, which is like finishing their roads and sidewalks and those types of things.
Well, here in the map, show that this is Phase G. So Phase G is only, that is kind of like a rectangle, does it? Or encompasses the rest of the stuff, and this is like a sub, like another part of Phase G. You know what I mean, I want to understand.
This is just the north part of.
Yeah, they call it Phase G, isn't it? So, okay. So what, I want to understand if that's Phase G is the the entire, I don't know, you can put the map there, I can explain better. Um, it's kind of funny, I want to understand where we are. So this is the only area that is built right now?
Uh, I think we actually, uh, accepted another portion, last meeting or the meeting before. So this is, I think, the second, um, portion we're accepting some, so.
Yeah, we're actually, uh, accepting the improvements as they're completed in different sections, so that, as the mayor said, the people with completed homes and or businesses could move into them, um, without waiting for the whole area to be.
Oh, so we are doing patches instead of the whole thing?
Yeah, we're, we're doing it by, somewhat by blocks.
Okay.
Any other question? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved as well. Uh, tomorrow night is Community Hold, Julia, what are we talking about?
So tomorrow, we, the first, uh, part of the meeting, um, our financial consulting elders are gonna be here to talk about the CIP that you present to us, is it feasible or not? Um, and then the second part is, um, we are gonna have, uh, Fact TV talking about, uh, the future of their budget. You know, because some of the franchise fees that they are receiving now, they're gonna go away eventually, and so we need to have a discussion about how we're gonna fund Fact TV in the future. Um, that's it.
All right, and then also next Tuesday is a Special Accountant Council meeting as well. I don't remember the time off the top of my head, is it still seven thirty? It is seven thirty, okay.
Council component of it is seven thirty.
All right.
Finance is six thirty, and Joint Review Board at four thirty.
And there's one more.
And Plant Commission at five thirty.
Yeah. All right, Gabrielle?
Sorry, another question to keep us going, but I'm just curious about, in terms of procedure, do we ever like build in breaks to these meetings? Or is it, is it always just like, we plow forward no matter what?
Try to plow forward, if you gotta go to the restroom or something, go ahead.
Okay, so we don't ever like build in, like, we don't have like, well, we hit two hours, we take a five minute break.
No.
We don't do that.
No, I'm sorry. All right.
That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Yep. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, see you tomorrow night.